Wherever you want. Dave's not showing up tonight, so you can go wherever you want to sit. Good evening and welcome to the Budget and Finance Committee. Today is April the 11th. The record reflect that voting members Brian DePagni, Pavel Peano are present. Mr. Abdi will not be present this evening, and I'm the Chair Mark LaPlante. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Gentlemen, we have sets of minutes that I, that we have not approved, and so I am going to ask if we could take them as a block. If that's your opinion. We are, we are needing to pass the February 14th, February 28th, and the March 28th minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would say if we pass these two as a block, I'd vote on this, but I'd have to vote present on the 14th.
Okay, so is there a motion to take the-
So there's a motion to take February 28th and the March 28th meeting as a block to vote on it?
And to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the 28th of both February and March. Is there any discussion? Here we now call the question, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, no. The ayes have it. We will deal with the other February 14th at a different time. I want to change the order a bit this evening. As you know, councilor, sometimes we have city staff who have to be at three different places at the same time, and they have yet to figure out a way to do that. So if you'll oblige us, I'd like to take document number 12618 out of order, please. Some motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. Dylan Martinez Dominguez, Community Development Director, address 71 Pleasant Street. So tonight, we have before you the FY19 budget for our CDBG and our home fund budget for FY19 for review and approval of our annual budget. So our FY19 starts on July 1st, and it's funded with fiscal year 2018 CDBG and Home Grants. That's usually how the HUD and federal government works. So since we have not received our actual allocation, what you have before you is based on level funding from the previous year. So there's $1,518,368 for CDBG and $683,039 for Home Funds. Until we receive our allocation, actual allocation, our action plan can be submitted to HUD. So for approval, so because the document then will specify the amount, and the mayor will also have to sign it, we don't have that amount yet. We'll continue to prepare the final document for submission, but we'll make the necessary adjustments. And we ask that you approve the budget with a 10% variation either over or under until we can get our final number. We did learn, however, that for this year, thanks to some advocacy, there were some increases to this current budget. And so we're waiting to hear what will that increase be for us locally. I know that there was about $3.3 billion for increase nationally, nationwide for CDBG and $1.362 billions for, for Home. So we're hopeful, and soon as we have that information, we'll share it with you. And it is anticipated that probably in a couple of weeks, we'll, we'll know. But the deadline for the, for the allocations to be announced is May 24th. The CDBG budget we have, which we have received, has $260,000 as a match. And it's for the park grant, the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities grant. It's for South Common Phase Two renovations. $100,000 in, in project-related costs to support our Leta Bateman grant, which we also received through HUD. $132,898 for infrastructure improvements. A $10,000 match to a mayor's house, to house formerly homeless individuals from Lawrence, even though they're, they're out in, in Haverhill. $286,796 for payment due to HUD on the Gateway Section 108 loan. And $303,674 for administrative costs. We have also set aside $150,000 for homeowner rehabilitation projects. An RFP process was conducted, as it is every year, for the public service. For public services, the applications were made available in November 27th. They were due back to us on February 2nd, and we received 22 applications totaling $517,919. However, we only have $200,000 available for funding. So there is a cap, 15% cap on public service activities. So that's all we can allocate in the budget. We have a Community Development Advisory Board that's made up of residents that review the applications and make funding recommendations to the mayor. The members of that CEDAP, what we call the CEDAP, are Nancy Corrigan, who's been serving, Becky Janney, Martha Rentas, City Councilor Stella Reyes, and State Representative Frank Moran. This year, the CEDAP has two new members, which are former representative, State Representative Marcos Devers, and Elisa de Lavasta, representing the Arlington neighborhood. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for their time, as well as thank Domingo Melendez and James Blatchford for their years of service on this board. All the applicants had an opportunity to present on their projects about three minutes at the February 12th meeting. And then the CEDAP met on February 21st to decide on the recommendations. These recommendations that were delivered to the mayor's office on February 23rd. And then on March 2nd, Soufink and I met with the mayor, and he made his final decisions, which is what you have before you this evening. So there's a total of 18 public service activities, including ESOL classes and youth employment, which are the mayor's priorities for these, for these funds. One change that we made this year was the elimination of the public infrastructure category under CDBG. Just because, for that particular, for public services. Just because there was really one, and one organization that was applying for these funds year after year. And so we, the mayor made a decision to not move forward with that particular category and actually reinvest the funds into the priorities, which are education and youth services. The home budget, which you have received, has level funding for homeowner rehabilitation projects. We usually put $200,000 for first-time home buyers. Down payment assistance, and that typically assists anywhere between 13 to 15 residents in our city. $127,456 are for certified community housing development organizations. And then $210,000 for housing development projects. So some of those have been, come online. And then the rest, $68,303 is for administrative cost. So this evening, I'm requesting that you approve the annual action plan budget and authorize expenditure of the grant funds. And then send this item to full council to order a public hearing on May 1st. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and so is Soufink, the Manager of Financial and Administrative Services.
So I've got a series of questions. So are all of the, all of the various accounts here that are funded, were there any changes between what was submitted to the mayor and what the mayor finally submitted to us?
There is. We have copies of the spreadsheet, which detail all of the recipients, the funding that was requested, the funding that was recommended by the advisory board, and then the mayor's recommendation. Thank you, sir.
So that has, okay, so I'll take a look at that real quick.
Those are all the program services that were funded. Of the $200,000.
Thank you. So these are all the requests as well?
That's the, in that spreadsheet, you have the amount that that organization submitted and requested, and what was, what they received in prior years, what the advisory board recommended, and then what the mayor's recommendation were, which are what you have before you.
Do you, do you also have the ones that didn't make the cut at all, that applied for, for these monies?
I believe every, there was one organization that applied for public infrastructure, and that's the category that was eliminated.
Everybody else got money, is that what it was?
Yes.
Everybody got money. So the, if everybody got money, then the mayor did not line item-
More of what it was, it was reallocated.
So everybody got something, but just a different dollar amount. Okay. And from this year to last year, are we talking the same, for again, under the public services, are we looking at the same? The same recipients? Are there changes in recipients?
I believe they remained the same. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, that's true. The boxing club is, no, the Lawrence Boxing Club is in Brown.
Good to know. Thank you. One of the things I just, and I've never asked this question, it struck me tonight, that why haven't I? The CDBG home ownership rehabilitation, and there may be others like it. I'm curious, as a district councilor, and there may not be as much of a, I'm, I'm surrounded by at-large councilors, but as a district councilor, I'm interested in knowing addresses that, in my district, that were impacted by, for example, the homeowner rehabilitation. Do you break them down by addresses where these monies are going?
We have records of all that in the office. There's two things. Number one is applications are first come, first served basis, number one. Number two, we have to make sure these are low-to-moderate income families. So there's also income restrictions there. But I'm sure if we can follow up with information about that, I'll be happy to provide that.
So what's, I mean, one of the things that people always add, and always, I get asked occasionally, is, you know, we, we do these various grants, and how are we impacted by that? And, and sometimes it's useful, I can say for the people that I represent, well, look in our area and our neighborhood. Out of the CDBG homeowner rehabilitation, I can tell you, there were 10, 15, I don't know the numbers, addresses of individuals who were directly impacted by monies that came through this program. Not only that, but if you look at the Leta grant monies, Leta Rehab Support, maybe that's another one. I just don't know enough about each one of these programs to say which one of them is our, have targeted addresses where we can call. And I don't want this to be like a huge research project, I don't want to be a time sink. But if it's an easy, just, it's an Excel spreadsheet, and it's easy to figure out. I, I would be curious to know, in my district, what kind of impact this funding is making. So if it's, and I'm not sure which of these items, it's going to be both in the first part, community development portion, and in the home projects, I'm guessing, would be the two places where there's actual-
Yes.
Funding going, the, the public services, it's a program, that's harder to know, right? But the, the first and the third one would be helpful.
Right, so there's a couple of-
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Totally, totally makes sense. So it is broken down by census tract, and probably there's only one census tract, which is Mamba in an area that oftentimes doesn't meet unless it's, there's an individual in a home that, that meets the income requirements. But I do know that last year, there were 46 housing units made let safe. And many of those units need matching CDBG funds. We support, for instance, the inspections that are conducted in those homes. We also support some of the staffing time. And so they are connected in a way. So that's one point right there. There were 13 new homeowners that we assisted last year. That was, this information was part of the State of the City address. And then there was funding that was committed to the PAC 10 Loft, which is by Franklin Street, which we see some of the work going, and that's going to be 110 units of affordable housing. So it, it, it really depends. But I believe that in the presentation that we did at the library, we have a map that has highlighted, maybe I can share that.
Good, so it's, you could access it, and that'd be helpful. Because I think what, and when I go, and you go to these as well, we go to these neighborhood association meetings, and it's one of those tidbits of information that really, that, that connect what we're doing here tonight to what's actually going in the neighborhood, and we can make that connection. I think it's a powerful ability to, to provide information. So if you can, that's helpful. So one, two, three. Okay, the other one I have is the, each one of these public service organizations, and I'm not going to name each one of them. Have they all been vetted by the Secretary of State's office, meaning that they are fully compliant with the, with, with the proper paperwork? The reason why I ask that, a few years ago, that did not take place, and there were a few organizations that did not have that. And we just need to make sure that we're giving it to organizations that are meeting other parts of the law as well, so.
Yes, absolutely. Federal funds are very strict, and there are certain, I mean, unless an application has all the documentation, including the status of the nonprofit, the, you know, tax filing, all that, they cannot, we cannot move forward with anything.
We gave it out years ago. I was here, and I remember, and we made a big deal out of it. So it, just because it's a requirement doesn't mean we always adhere to it. I just want to make sure that we're adhering to it, that's all.
We are. And then the other thing that we've been implementing is really a strict checklist, and making sure that each, each file has all that information, it's checked off. And that's something that we have been really focusing a lot on, absolutely.
I think that's it for me, for now, anyway. Mr. Peano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for, for asking that question. I was actually going to ask for some type of documentation that could give us an idea of what each, you know, I'm familiar with a lot of these groups, but it's one thing to, you know, kind of see it on paper, and other things to, to read the description of what each project is about. So my, my first question is, when the advisory board is looking to make a recommendation, how do they prioritize their decisions?
There is a process. So when the CEDAP or the Community Advisory, Community Development Advisory Board is called, there are meetings. We have meetings with them, we'll go over what is CDBG, we go over what are the restrictions around the, the grant. After that, they are given instructions, they're given scoring sheets, they understand. And then the other thing is that we have seasoned members also in the CEDAP that also provide guidance to the new members. We provide the guide, we provide the restrictions, the framework, but they do all the work. We don't influence that process.
Can you talk to me a little bit about the, their scoring method?
I'm sorry?
You said that they have a scoring sheet, and I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about their scoring method?
It's a standardized method, really. It's, it's, it's looking at the application and looking at, at all of the requirements. And I don't have one in front of me right now, but there is a process that very much guided. It's, it's, it's pretty structured, and it's dictated by HUD.
And what is, and the reason I'm asking this, I've been involved in some groups that give funding to nonprofits, and usually there's a very clear sort of mission or a focus that we have for, for that funding year. And I'm wondering if there's something similar with this advisory board?
I guess.
Or, or is it just like, these groups are coming, and we're just trying to judge per, per group whether or not to give them-
No. The, the people submit the application by a certain time, certain date and time. Those applications, and they're reviewed, and make sure that everything is in order. Then, applications are actually either mailed or given by hand in binders to each of the members of the CEDAP. They have revised those, they come together and have a discussion. They make recommendations, and based, and then that, that was, that, that's what goes on this, on the sheet. And then we move that to the mayor's office, and the mayor then, based on his priorities. Because first of all, the priorities that were set for the city, there was a process for it. They're part of a consolidated plan. That's a five-year plan that includes a lot of public participation. It includes data collection, they interview key stakeholders that go into the community. So it's a very rigorous process. After that, then, we also look at, based on those data, what are the priorities for our city? So our priorities for our city, for, for, for CDBG and Home are economic development, affordable housing, making sure that we have affordable housing in the city, public parks, and you saw that today, we had the ribbon cutting for the Borgon Square Park, public facilities and infrastructure, and then public service. And then most recently, also, we, thanks, thanks to the ESG grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant, also provide homeless services, which we do through that, and then through a small grant that we provide to a mayor's house. So those are the priorities. Based on those priorities, and the mayor sets other priorities. The, the mayor could say, okay, for CDBG, I think that education is extremely important. And our youth, providing opportunities to use that are really important. So if you see on the recommendations, a lot of the funding, it's allocated based on those priorities set by the mayor.
And what were the, so you mentioned, I mean, you said those are examples, but were those the priorities that the mayor set for CDBG?
Yes.
So you said, so education, what else?
Education and youth, either employment or services. There are other categories there as well, but those are the priorities for the mayor.
Okay, so that was the main priority, education, youth, employment, or services, okay. And do you take a look at, I mean, it's kind of in line with the question that Councilor Plant asked earlier, with, are you looking at just the, the application for that year, or you also look, like, how do you measure success?
So there is, within the application, there are deliverables that they need to provide. There are indicators of success, not only the number of people that they serve, which is primarily what it's required, but also the narrative based on what they were able to accomplish with that, with that youth. When they go before the CEDAP, they do their three-minute presentation. Many of those organizations have been recipients, and so they can come forward and share about success from the previous years, and then moving forward, what are the goals set, and why do they need the funding again? So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, 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 I think it does. I just wanted to make sure that the advisory board, when they're looking at these applications, that they're not just looking at that particular application, that they're seeing, you know, applications for the last couple of years so they can judge whether or not they've been meeting their goals. There's a lot of nonprofits that sometimes they apply for different things, but they don't have a way to measure success for themselves. So how do you, as a funder, know that they do have 100 people or 50 people coming to their events? Because when you get invited to the event, I mean, I mean, to what they're doing, you just get to see a snapshot of what goes on throughout the day. You're not constantly there unless you have a child or a family member that is taking part in the program. You won't have a full understanding of what is going on. So if you have a, a way to, to check and, and, and measure the, the success of that nonprofit, then you can see that, yes, you, you're getting a return on investment.
So there's three ways that can be measured. Number one, there is a demographic sheet, that if they don't submit those, that's a requirement of the grant. So demographics, information on all the people that they serve. So they say they're supposed to serve 25 people. Those 25 people have to meet the, the income, you know, low-income requirements or restrictions, whatever you want to call it. So that's one step. Second step is there's a CAPR, which is a report. Every year, there's a report, it's called CAPR. It's on our website as well, it's on the city website. Every year, the end of every year, within the, the last three months, right after the fiscal year ends, we have to put in a support, a report, talking about all the successes. What did we accomplish over the, the period of the last year? You know, how many families, I mean, what, what was it that we did with this funding? So that's two things. And I, I'm missing the third point. I know that there is a third way we measure the impact. But I think that the grant only requires us to serve, like, for program services, to get, gather information and demographics about the recipients of that funding. So if it's youth, we're only counting youth. There might be demographics that say, you know, sort of the, the makeup of the family, but that's not what, we're counting really the direct recipient of that service.
Does anybody in the group-
Oh, I remember, I'm sorry. Their visits, their site visits and monitoring visits. So that, those are the three, that wasn't my third point. So we have the project officer go out, and also someone from our, our finance office to make sure that their, their fiscal, you know, paperwork is, is on point.
You said, I'm sorry, the, what officer, the client officer?
The project officer. So we have Marisol Cologne is a project officer.
Okay, that's great. That was, that was going to be my, my next-
But that doesn't end there. I mean, there's, it's, it's, when we give out this funding, our goal is to make sure that we support programs so that they are successful, rather than being people that are there to make sure that, that they, they meet the requirements. It's really, what do you need from our office to make sure that you're successful in implementing these funds and this project? So.
How do you do that?
Phone calls, very open conversations, site visits, monitoring visits, emails. I mean, you can see, I mean, I'm entering new into this disposition, but you can see the relationship, the relationships that are built within not only the project officer, but also the, the finance office and the recipients. It is, it is genuine. I've gone to a couple of the site visits, and I was really pleased, because that's what I would like to see. Really, that we have, we're approachable, that we're helpful to the community and programs, so.
Okay. My next track of questions are more related to the numbers, the recommendations from the advisory board and from the mayor. You know, I'm, I'm interested to know why there was one where the advisory board recommended LCW $0, and the mayor recommended $15,000.
Once again, I think LCW has to do with adult education, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that is why. It corresponds to the priority that the mayor set.
Okay. So the, I, I, I understand. You know, but at the same time, I see that, you know, if, if one of the priorities, I think, you know, one of my priorities for me is always the youth. You know, and I think there's very limited time that you can find, especially in this city. You know, a lot of opportunities for the kids to be doing something over the summer. That's why I'm appreciative of the work that you guys are doing, because I think without that funding and some private, some private funds, you know, you'd be stuck in an apartment all day. So I think that's important. But, you know, when I see, you know, it's disappointing that Beyond Soccer and their, you know, which is an amazing program, that the advisory board, you know, recommended $10,000, and they got zero funding. So not even enough funding to say, like, they're going to hire one or two of those teens to be part of that program. And, you know, across the board, I see that a lot of the, it looks like that the advisory board, their priority was kind of focused, I mean, it, it, it looks balanced, you know, as far as that they were focusing on, on youth. And then they, there was also some, some ESL sort of focus as well. But it looks like in the mayor's recommendations, a bigger focus on ESL than youth, because there were several youth programs that were, that were cut. And I'm just trying to, trying to get a better understanding on, on that.
All right, so I, I mean, the mayor makes his recommendations based on several things. I mean, the mayor makes, has the final, makes the final decision. But I can tell you that what I, I'm guessing his decision is based on is the long waitlist for ESOL classes. I mean, that is one thing that we know, there's a long waitlist for those, for that type of service. So I think that that's why some of his, his, the allocations are being placed on that. That's my wild guess, but.
Is there any way of knowing, I think, you know, what's sometimes helpful for me when you're making these type of decisions, and especially you have a limited amount of money, and you can't say yes to everybody, is to know, you know, the money that you're giving, how many people are going to be served? You know, I'm wondering if there was any thought, you know, put into that. And also, I'm, I, I love to sort of, I know you probably don't have that information in front of you, but I'm, you know, I'd love to see, you know, for that LCW, you know, how many, $15,000, like, how many students does that, does that mean?
I think what's an average for the CDBG, it's $1,000 per individual, correct? So it's $1,000 per individual. That's what HUD sets. And so whether, whatever, it's $15,000, they probably are going to pay for 15 people to go into the program. That doesn't mean that many times they surpass those numbers, because I've seen that happen. But that's what they're purchasing with this grant. And the other thing that this grant does, that probably you can see here, is probably help those organizations leverage other sources of funding, which is important.
I'm sorry?
Having a federal grant helps you leverage other sources of funding, or use it as a, you know, as a match for other sources of funding. So I think that that's really, that's the other benefit of having a, a federal grant.
Yeah, no, no, I, I quite agree. I mean, you, you need some, even when you go to private sources, you, you need something already on the table for them to think of you as legitimate. So I understand why it'd be important to give, I mean, LCW is also a very large organization that can probably, that has the standing to find some of this funding elsewhere, whereas someone like, like Beyond Soccer, or even, I mean, I, I was interested seeing the Canal Gym that was on there. That was disappointing that there were decreased, but I know organizations like, I mean, that's a business, that it's- but I know organizations like, I mean, that's a business, that it's, it'd be very difficult for them to, um, get funding from, from private sectors.
Um, they're actually a nonprofit.
So they're a nonprofit? Get out of the way.
Yeah, I believe that they're a nonprofit, because otherwise I don't, am I correct? Right? Because that's the paperwork that we have to collect to make sure that they're in line. So they have to have a five oh one C three, they need to have all these tax IDs, and so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I, I mean, a question for the chair. What, what is usually the process for this? So when it goes to, um, the, the council, the council has a public hearing, and then sort of what, what happens with this? So even if you, if you wanted to, uh, let's say a council, I'm not saying that I do, but say a council want to debate, um, one of these figures, like, is that possible? Or are you just basically voting up or down on the, the full, um, you know, like, the, this, this full amount?
Yeah, so as my understanding corrected or wrong, we don't have the ability to change this. This is it. This is either up or down. We certainly can, and I'm about to make a comment when you're done with this about one of these items, but, um, yeah, it's either all or nothing.
Okay. Um, my last question.
All right. I, I think that's the way, that's the rule on this, right?
Yes, the mayor makes the.
My last question, at the beginning of your presentation, you were talking about, um, approving it plus or negative ten percent. I couldn't quite catch, um, what you meant by that.
So the federal government, we don't know what our allocation is for this year. We know we're going to receive funding, but we don't know that amount until later on. Um, sometimes September, um, July, I'm sorry, not September, but sometimes even in June, July, we're receiving this information. So based on history, based on what we received last year, that's how we base it. Uh, we do know that there's going to be an increase for this, this fiscal year. So, um, you may see an increase, we may see an increase in those, in those budgets from here. So once, once that's done, then we'll make the adjustments as needed.
So how do you adjust it? How do you, if there's a decrease, how do you take money from some of these groups or, or add money to some of these groups?
That is a question for the finance person. So Sue, maybe you can answer that question.
Hi, Sue Fink, um, Finance Officer in Community Development Department. Um, so let's talk about a couple of things that are percentage. So if we get an, either an increase or a decrease, our administrative, um, line item changes, because that's a twenty percent cap. So it would either go up or down depending on that. Um, the public service is also a cap at fifteen percent of the grant amount. So typically, um, if there is a significant decrease or increase, we would actually call the advisory board back to review the applications again and make some additional adjustments that way. Um, some of the internal adjustments that we could make would be in perhaps the infrastructure improvement, because that's a, a Community Development Department line item, so we could absorb an up or down hit in that line item. We just have to prioritize any of the capital improvements that we were going to do with that, that funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, I mean, we just got this sheet tonight, so, um, bear with me as I was going through it as the previous speaker was going through it. I'm a, I'm a bit, I think, surprised and disappointed. Disappointed about Beyond Soccer. This is their first, one, two, three, fourth time they've applied for funding, and they're zero for four. They haven't gotten one of these funds. It just disappoints me that, that I know this organization, and look, I, we can make an argument for each one of these organizations, right? So, but this is an organization that's really tremendous. It's, it's citywide, but it's had an especially important impact in, in my district, but it is citywide. Um, and the number of kids that they're offering support to is tremendous, and they're a first-class organization, and they're doing really well. It's hard for me to support this when I see a zero next to its name. Um, I feel that's wrong about it. And, um, I do look at this, and I see some other places where things have gone up that traditionally have been a lot lower. And even a bit of, just some money, not looking for a lot, but some money, maybe even half of their request, um, and finding half someplace else. So let me ask you this question. You mentioned earlier that, that you believe that there may be additional monies coming into the city.
We, no, there, there is money coming in. There was three point three billion dollars nationally.
We just don't know how much.
We just don't know how much, no.
So, and if you answer this, and maybe I wasn't paying good enough attention, but if you answered this to Councilor Piano, I, I beg your forgiveness. If we get X number of dollars back, can we reopen it and find another applicant and give money to an applicant? Or we need to either put more money into the current awardees? Um, how, how, how would that work?
That, I guess, it's going to be up to us. I guess we'll have to call back to seat app and see, because I don't think there was any applications that, out of the applications that were submitted, there was only one that did not meet, uh, the requirements for this, for this year. So you're looking at, at all of the organizations, um, that were funded and that apply. With that, I guess that what we'll do is, uh, based on what, the amount that we receive, make recommendation, I guess the seat app will make recommendations to the mayor, and we go back to, with the mayor.
And it will come back to the council, because you're getting more money? Obviously, that's how this would work. So the earlier question I asked, was there any organizations that applied and didn't get money? And I, and the answer I may misunderstood was, everybody got money, but it was reallocated. And, and reading it a little more closely, that's, I'm reading it differently. So Beyond, uh, Beyond Soccer was given a ten thousand, they got zero. Uh, English speakers of second language applied and got nothing. Um, and they were from all of in July. The Y W C A Northwestern, um, didn't get any money either.
So Eastern, no, that's the organization that applied for public infrastructure. That's the category that we, that the mayor, um, removed.
So there were two then that applied and ended up not getting. So that's actually, I believe, what I was looking for in my question too, is that right? So, uh, I know, I, a third. Uh, Blessed Steven Academy, I would say Bellisini, right? So they applied, but didn't get anything either. So there's more than just those two. So, um, so I am not prepared to support this tonight. I will not be voting against it. Um, I will entertain a motion, hopefully a motion to send up without a recommendation, and then so I could have an opportunity to talk to the mayor about some of these.
Mr. Chair, I have one final question.
Sure.
Um, is, is there a reason why, um, Beyond Soccer got, uh, zero dollars? Because maybe there's something behind the scenes that we just don't know about. That's what I was going to ask him.
Our, yeah, no, my, our job, our department's job, is to educate, provide guidance, accept the applications, put together the seat app, give them guidance, collect their recommendations, bring those recommendations to the mayor. We really can't, we have very little, um, influence in the process, because that's the way it's supposed to be. We're supposed to be objective. Um, that we can make mention, we, we can make recommendation, yes, but at the end of the day, it's really not our job. Our job is really to make sure that we put the system and the structure in place.
So, so I think what would be great to add to the process, because I know that when I've been involved in situations like this, when, when you look back at the history, and you're trying to wonder why, um, A C T Lawrence got, you know, X amount, you can go back and you can read, like, oh, um, you know, that if, if you have decent enough minutes, you can see what that board that year was thinking about when they gave, um, that amount. Um, so potentially, I mean, I know we don't have anything like that now, but, you know, it'd be great in the future, uh, you know, anytime anyone has, you know, these type of questions, that you can be like, oh, now I understand why the board decided to give them half, or give them zero, or whatever it might be.
So another thing to make, um, make you aware of is that by Friday, you'll have the annual act of draft, annual action plan that goes out for public, you know, input participation. That document gets placed at the library, at our office, and online. People are able to go through it, make recommendations, they can go to our office, make our copy. I mean, that is a time where people can come forward and say, you know, make, make any questions, suggest, I mean, that's the, that's the point. Then we have to record those. If you look at our annual action plan from last year, it's online, you'll see if there was any public participation, if there was any feedback. If you look at our consolidated plan, it tells you. All those, that, all that information has to be made public. So there are, there are opportunities for people to comment on these things, and it's posted in the paper, I mean.
Right, no, so I think my, um, my, my comment wasn't on that, it was more on, so for the advisory board, for every item that they're voting on, you know, there, there's a reason why they said ten thousand instead of twelve thousand, um, or why they might have said zero instead of, um, fifteen. Um, so I, I was just making a recommendation. Maybe it's an impossible recommendation, right? Um, but I know that it's, it's been, and some of the boards that I used to be a part of, it was helpful for me, um, and I thought it might be helpful for, um, for the advisory board and, and for the council as well.
Okay, thank you. And, and then my last point is that one of the things we've been talking about over several years now is the E S L, and I know there's always been, there's, there continues to be an emphasis, and rightly so. So I'm glad that there is, but every year, this is what we say, well, these members of the previous board mentioned to the C D B G or Community Development Offices, we get a lot of intro and entry level E S L. We need to move up to the next realm, the intermediary, or the, the next phase or levels of E S L proficiency. And I realize that all we can deal is with the applications that are before us, and if they don't provide that secondary or the intermediate E S L, then we can't force that, right? So, but it's always been, and, and you have far more, when I say you, the city has far more interaction than I, as a city councillor, with these organizations. And I'll ask again, it, you know, please put a bug in their ear that, that there's also a need for that next step, that there's a bit more conversational kind of stuff, and so we're able to move beyond just the, hi, how are you? You know, I had to say that in English, but hi, how are you? We can talk a little more in depthly and have a better communication, which I think is important for our population as well. So, um, if you can make that pitch, that would be helpful.
I believe that just based on conversations with Adult Learning Center, they tend to have their openings in those higher grades, because the demand comes in and that waitlist are longer for the newcomers, or people that are just learning the language. So they are, they are offering the service, but the demand is not as high as for the newcomers, or the people that are just learning the language. And I think that's where the backlog is, which is why probably they're applying for that.
Okay. Okay. So at this point, um, I've already made mention of my preference, but we can do it however the committee wishes. I prefer to send this up without a recommendation. I don't want to keep it here, I want to move it up. That'll allow at least me and maybe others here an opportunity to talk to the mayor about some of these more, but I don't want to, I don't want to languish here. So is there a motion?
Um, so a motion to send this without a recommendation to the full council?
Motion's made, and it's been seconded. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And, and thank you for your work that you, no recommendation. And please thank the, the members of the committee that you work with for putting a lot of work in time as volunteers on this, and we appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, I will.
Uh, let's go to the very top. Um, the clerk has been very patient, and I want to thank the clerk for his patience. Um, and we will go in any order clerk that you would like to.
Your choice, whatever you'd like. Ready for all of it and ready to go.
So in that case, let's start from the top. So, uh, document one eighteen eighteen, City Clerk Fee Adjustments.
Good evening, councilors.
Identify yourself just once, and we're off to the races.
Sure, Bill Maloney, City Clerk.
Yep.
Um, this item was placed on the agenda by myself at the, at the request of the council president, uh, apparently to try to bring us back in line with probably what the area fees and costs of other cities and towns maybe should be, are, and otherwise. Uh, I launched a, um, I tried to launch a Merrimack Valley, uh, review of other cities and towns, uh, similarly situated to us in this area, uh, and you see a comparison sheet. Uh, one city and town, as you can see, did not respond, but others were very gracious and very helpful with their responses. Uh, and they provide us at least a comparison or a look see, um, in any particular area or any general area that you might be interested in, or I certainly am interested in, to see what comparatively that they may be charging for certain fees and costs. Primarily these, uh, and I tried to list as many as I could, um, that are essentially going through the city clerk's office, uh, at this time. Um, I'll beat you to the punch here, um, and, uh, tell you that the result is that if the increases or the total increases across the board are about four hundred eighty-nine dollars, uh, it increases if they are implemented as they're presented here. It will result, or mathematically results in about sixty-six thousand in increased revenues. The city clerk's office does approximately, uh, a hundred and ninety thousand of, uh, fees across the table, nickels and dimes, as I call them, uh, per year. So this will increase it roughly if it's a dollar for dollar match. Um, it doesn't account for buyer's remorse, uh, people shying away from, uh, this city in favor of something that might be more economical, or just, uh, not go, uh, as, not going, uh, or going without rather than pay the increase. So if you, you know, kind of think that in your mind, I mean, your guess is as good as mine. Maybe it results in about fifty, maybe sixty thousand, uh, across the board.
Thank you. So a series of questions that I have, and thank you for putting this together. So many of these are, I'm going to presume many, not all are annual licenses.
Some are. Um, do you want me to point them out?
No, I think I can figure it out.
Okay.
But I think the, the bigger issue here is that there, there are some here that I, I mean, I guess I could look in the budget and see if you brought any money in on some of them. But it just seems like the dog license, for example, I mean, you get much, I mean, do many people adhere to the dog license requirement? There's a lot of dogs out there, I just wonder.
The last time these fees went through the council, and you were a member of the council at the time, uh, and you can correct me if I'm, if my memory's incorrect, um, at that time, uh, the recommendation for non-neutered dogs, I think, was twenty-five dollars. And the council had voted to increase it to fifty dollars, uh, which caused people to shy away, obviously, from registering their, their dogs, uh, for that amount. Uh, those who are dutiful to do it and obliged to do it, or required to do it by a dog officer, you know, pick your poison here, uh, pay the fifty dollars. The, uh, neutered and spayed animals are still at a fifteen-dollar, uh, fee, uh, as you can see. Um, the recommendation this time around is to go from, uh, fifteen to twenty, leaving the fifty-dollar fee as it stands. Uh, I think it's at its, uh, breach point, to be honest with you, uh, in terms of capturing those people who registered their animals. We've seen a drop-off over the past five years.
I'm looking at the budget. In F Y two thousand and fifteen, just for, just, just for giggles here, we, we have a, uh, where's my dogs? Here they are. Uh, dog licenses, forty-two eighty-five. This is actual money brought in. Just, this is an example. A forty-two eighty-five in F Y sixteen, thirty-eight ninety, and I think as of, like, ten months into the last fiscal year, we are at thirty-two. We probably didn't even crack the previous years on that. So I just.
Yeah, and, and I.
Wonder if we're, and it's more of a question of enforcement more than the clerk's office, and that's the issue.
It, well, it, the interpretation, I see it in, in terms of, you know, I look at the numbers on the dog licenses. Uh, six years ago, we were sending out about almost seven hundred dog licenses. Today, the end of, uh, March, which is our annual, um, we're doing about maybe two hundred, two hundred fifty.
Let me move on, all right, because I have some other questions. Uh, the other one that caught my attention is taxi licenses, both the initial medallion and initial livery. And with the rise of Uber and Lyft, where they are, I don't believe they're required, are they, to register and/or provide any kind of license?
My, my last discussions with Officer Flores was that they are, they are not.
So, okay.
And, and I think that's where it stands, but I'd leave that to him.
Yep.
Uh, I left those categories alone for that debate, for that reason.
And that's where I'm entering. So.
I'm sorry?
That's exactly where I'm going with this.
Right.
Which is, you know, it's, it's, um, that, we have, we have a requirement that they go ahead and that they pay this fee, and I realize that there's a cost for us to process this fee, and I get that, right, as a government? Um, and I know that you're, you clearly just say you didn't increase it, but with the development of our communicate, our, our, our transportation sector, which is going from these stand, you know, standard or old-fashioned taxis to these more rideshare kind of things with Uber and Lyft, I just, I guess I just questioned whether we need to continue. I just, I guess I just questioned whether we need to continue in the big picture, not only are we, should we contend of providing a fee for that? Because it's almost like an unfair advantage that's being provided to the Ubers and Lifts of the world as opposed to the taxicab company.
No, and certainly I understand the point and your, your direction on that. And again, that's specifically, you know, I, other than calling up the, the area cab associations who invited them to this discussion, I, I suggest that that may be a topic of its own.
Yeah.
And that may be subject to, because everything that's done with that is really not, we'll say, monitored by the clerk's office at all. It's entirely the hacking division for the Lawrence Police Department. The only thing the clerk's service, the clerk's office provides is access to the agenda and collection of the fees that are collected.
So you don't want to touch that, is what I'm understanding.
Well, I mean, again, I made no recommendation either way. I just listed it because it is there to route through the clerk's office for your information. Certainly, if you wish to bring it up as an issue, I can place it on the agenda.
And real quick, because I'm sure I just want to give my colleagues an opportunity to speak and ask questions. Can you find for me, real quick, is there any increases on old gold? On the?
Yes.
Vendor sidewalk rental fee increases for those? So there's an old gold increase?
If someone's a vendor, a vendor on the sidewalk.
Let's start off with the old gold. I'm sorry, I just jumped too quickly. Old gold.
Old gold's about halfway down the sheet.
It's, we've increased it from 100 to 125?
The suggestion is an increase to 125 from 100 as well as secondhand dealers.
So let me just, let me just reflect the numbers in the budget. We received no money in FY 16, no money in FY 15, and I doubt we're getting any money at all.
That's really not entirely accurate. I don't know where those figures may have come from.
The budget.
Yeah. The monies we pulled in for that is very minimal. I think we have probably two or three old gold licenses operating in the, in the city of Lawrence. At this point, that's about, you know, $300 maybe. Many people are getting out, they're not in that business. I guess it was more of a thriving business for estates, estate sales and things of that nature. It doesn't seem to be quite the rave these days, or they're simply not getting the licenses.
So I just don't understand why we were increasing something that we're not making any money on at all. I mean, it just seems kind of.
It may be pro forma, in, in terms of keeping in line with increases that the three people that we do have getting licenses would absorb that increase.
Move on to a bigger topic. Vendor sidewalk rental fee, is that increased at all?
Sidewalk rental fee?
Vendor sidewalk rental fee. Maybe that's a fee, not a license, maybe we're not.
I think that's licensing. That's not the clerk's office.
Okay, so there's nothing on there for that. We'll move on. Residential dump fees? I'm not sure what that means.
I'm not sure what that means either.
It'll come to you for that?
No, I mean, we have junk licenses, junk dealer applications, and junk dealer licenses that are three years each. The recommendation is there to actually impose the, the application fee that was passed the last time, this was before the council, which never actually got implemented, and to just kind of reaffirm it. The fee is not recommended, is recommended for an increase of about $40 to make it somewhat divisible by three, but there is an increase from 350 to 390 for a three-year license.
Okay, three years, okay. Blast, I'm going to recap quickly. Blasting, we've got zero. Fire, EMT, which is probably not you. Parking permits, parking permits, parking permits.
That must be a police department.
It wouldn't come from, they would, you would go for a parking permit, go to the police department?
Well, they do issue some neighborhood license, I mean, residential parking.
Right, residential parking stickers?
I think there's a slight fee to that.
And I know we've been doing it. Is that an annual permit, an annual fee?
I don't know, I don't know.
And this is, out of all these things, that's probably the, well, the taxi's kind of big, but this is a big one too, because these are residents who have clamored for, there's parking issues in the neighborhood, right? As you know, and we've, we've sat many hours in this area.
Right, right. The neighborhood sticker fee.
And, and this residential parking sticker, is that what we're talking about?
That's what I think it is, but it's nothing that rings a bell with the clerk's office.
It doesn't come from you?
No. No, we, we send them over to the police department when they come in because they issue the, they actually have either the contractor or the mechanism to issue the, the actual sticker.
Well, so here's the deal, so.
We don't have stickers.
In, in one year, 715 bucks, and then every other year after that, zero. So I, I, is that true?
We do have residential zones, I know that.
I'm sorry, parking, my bad. We, one year we had $220, and every other year was zero. So it's even worse. So that just, that to me is.
Interesting.
The fuddling. I'll stop there. Questions? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I, I definitely have a few questions. So first, just with the process, Mr. Clerk, so is, is this something that is in your prerogative to change it? Or is this something that you're coming to the city council for a vote?
No, it's not in the prerogative of the city clerk to do anything with these, I'm the conduit.
Okay.
You guys are the prerogative. This was placed on the agenda at the request of the council president.
Okay.
To see if fees can become either competitive or comparative with areas in, in those licenses that, or permits or documents that we do issue and certify to.
Okay, so you're not looking for an up or down vote, any of this, this is just like a report? And then it'd be up to the city council to create?
That's not what your request, this is a request, there's a request here to actually increase it to the, the number, right?
Well, I'm putting forth what is probably the pressure point as to where they, recommending where that fee might be increased to. You can individually decide not to, or vote to.
So, so this is a request, okay, all right, I got it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a petition, certainly only to get it to the council that has been requested by the council president to, again, bring this to the attention.
Okay, yeah, no, just wasn't sure if it was just a, a report on what could possibly be the changes.
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
No, it's more than that, Mr. Clerk. This is actually a proposal that we could adopt the, you have the current, and then the 2018 proposed change. So there's a proposed change on here.
That's correct.
And I'm guessing through, through the council president, you're representing him, because this is his request, that the council president is probably in line with the increase or the change to whatever we see in this 2018.
So this is, this is the council president's motion?
Well, I'm, I'm very cautious to suggest that I represent anybody. And to any degree. What I am doing is providing the council with information through the Budget and Finance Committee and the council as to a request that was presented to me to review and to compare.
Mr. Chair, the reason I was asking this is that, you know, that there's, if this is just a report, then we're looking at it, we can debate it, we can talk about it. But if we wanted to create action, it would have to, it would probably have to be a separate motion. Right? So if, if this was the motion that was brought up by, I guess it'd be the council president, then, you know, today we would talk about making those actual changes and do, you know, I feel like it's, it's a whole different discussion when we have to agree on the actual number and not just a report on what possibly could be the changes.
Yeah, so.
I think I get what you're saying, Council, and, and again, it is more than a report in that respect. It, it is advanced to seek additional revenues through the clerk's office, there's no question about that. And again, I say that advisedly at the behest of the council president, certainly in conjunction with what the city clerk and the clerk's office knows, has obtained for information and compares. I mean, I hate, and I don't really want to put it back all on the council, but these fees, all these fees, not all of them, but most of them, are within the control and the purview of the city council. The ordinances state that it is the city council that decides what these fees are, not the city clerk.
All right, so, so it looks like it, it is a proposal that we're, we're bringing forth to the, to the council. Correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So I, I'll, I'll ask some specific questions. There's, there's a few sort of items that I'm going to go through. With dog license neutered, I see that there is an increase to $20 where most places, it's, you know, between 10 and 15. So I'm wondering, you know, like, I'm all for increasing fees so that they're standard, because I know some, some of these fees were placed years ago, so that they're standard in, in the area, but when we're dealing with a poor community, like, I'm wondering why it would cost more to get a dog license in Lawrence than Andover or Hable?
I love dogs as much as you do and anybody else, for sure. I'll start with that. But the, again, the recommended suggested increase of $5 for your determination may be too much, maybe too little. Any and all of these fees, including the dog licenses, within the purview of the council. I may be bringing the suggestion, and again, I'm not asking for a carte blanche approval, this is the, you know, this is the way it should be. If there are recommendations that the council says that should be different, that may be one of them, certainly by vote of the council.
Okay. So I guess my question goes to, when that was increased, was it because here in Lawrence, it just, it costs more? Or was it just a thought, was like, oh, this could potentially be a place where we could increase it?
My eyes are more on the $50, non-neutered fees. I mean, that is really having a scare tactic effect on people who, to, to even register their dogs.
Correct. No, I completely agree that even though that right now it's $50 in, in Lawrence to have a license for a non-neuter dog, whereas in Amesbury is 10, and in Andover is 13. And I can see, you know, the difference why we would want to do that, us being such a small enclosed, such a small city with tons of people. Moving on, there were, so the pawnbroker's license, I see there were, it's decreasing from 350 to 300.
Oh, that, I'm, I'm sorry, that's a, oh, I'm, yes. I, in my research, I ran across a statute that says it cannot be more than 300.
Okay.
And that's the reason for that.
All right. And, actually, hold on. Because here it says 300, but in the second sheet, it says 390.
Yeah, that was my, I, I was trying to have it follow the junk dealers license, because that was the intent at the time it was approved, I believe in 2007, to have them kind of as three-year licenses. And then as I ran across statute, I'm sorry if I didn't pick it up in the other pages.
Okay.
I later found it toward the end of my research in preparing this, under General Law 140, Section 77, it cannot be more than 300.
Okay. And then with the transient vendor, I see that there's an increase from $50 to 100, and for the ice cream vendors, 50 to zero. So let's start with the ice cream vendors. Why would that be free for them?
Transient vendors is kind of a, a number.
The mobile food trucks, right?
It's an umbrella type of ordinance that, you know, someone comes in and says, geez, I want to, you know, sell snow cones on the common. That was the initial intention, apparently, of it, from just looking at the legislative progression. And it really rests on, the fee rests on two things. Inventory, which everybody says, I haven't got any yet. And the second, and if you don't have any inventory, then the assessor is supposed to assess no less than $50, and that ends up being the fee. So under the ordinance, what I'm suggesting is increase that assessment from 50 to 100. Maybe it's less, maybe it's somewhere in the middle, but it's a suggestion. The transient vendor license has exploded, mostly on the, strangely enough, on the state end. What the state end requires is a hawkers and peddlers license. You're now required to have fingerprints, a complete Cory check, and, and a host of other items. A fire inspection if you're going to use a gas grill of any sort, or electrical materials in your vending. Then that, that's a fee. People come in, what I say to them is, what used to be just a $50, geez, I'd like to sell popcorn on the park, is now a $400 to $500 investment to sell on a license that runs from the time it's issued, or no later than January 1st to the end of the year, December 31st. I don't know if that puts gasoline on the fire by increasing it from 50 to 100. Maybe the council sentiment is, leave it at 50. We, we like those people selling popcorn on, on the common. And maybe it should actually be 25. There is a concerted move, as you know, to move truck vendors out of that transient vendor ordinance, which was kind of adapted to, to fit in that, and it really doesn't fit, as you saw from your legislative review of transient vendors, truck vendors in particular. And, and I think that's certainly, from my estimation, a smart move to move it into Inspection Services as a whole separate license, as other cities and towns, especially big metropolitan areas do, because it is a different animal. They seem to come together. I'll segue into ice cream vendors.
So before you get into ice cream vendors, but at, at the moment, the mobile food trucks, they're, they're underneath that item, the transient vendors, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
For the moment.
For the moment, yeah.
And again, pending council approval of the, the next step.
Mm-hmm.
Into ice cream vendors. An interesting thing, we initially had, the city attorney and I, and the Lawrence Police Department, had placed the ice cream vendors within that same rubric on the truck vendors. It seemed to be an appropriate location. The city clerk would take the applications similar to any other transient vendor, and then issue a, an ice cream vendor license of some sort. The state stepped in with ice cream truck vendors of its own making and passed a new statute. I have it cited there, have, it's, it's Ice Cream Truck Vendors, General Law 270, Section 5. That was passed about two, three years ago. What it provides is, it takes the authority essentially out of the city clerk's office, and rather than continue that, we'll say, charade of running it through the city clerk's office, it now places it solidly with the police department to issue a permit for ice cream truck vendors in particular. If you go get an ice cream truck vendor license, for example, you can go to any police off, department in any city and town and use that license anywhere throughout the state. Whereas if the clerk's office issues an ice cream truck's vendor license based upon a permit granted by the police department, that's only good in Lawrence. You can't take that anywhere else. And that was pointed out to us in conjunction with discussions with the city attorney, and vendors, and vendors who are doing it statewide.
So, so is that the reason that you're going, you're going from $50 to $0?
I'm looking to eradicate it entirely.
Okay.
Out of the clerk's office, and putting it where it belongs in the police department. Discussions have already occurred with the issuing authority who recognize it as well, they see it.
Okay. So just for my, my fellow counselors, I would say that, you know, when, when this goes up in the full council, I mean, I don't know, whenever the time is to talk about the potentially making changes, I think $100 for these business owners. While we might think $50 is not a lot, these individuals have to, you know, they, they have to pay to get Cory, they have to pay to, at least they have to pay for, for fingerprints. There's a permit for fire, like, there's a lot of other permits outside of just this transient. And then they also have to get the, what's it called, hawk, hawk eye, hawkers?
Hawkers and peddlers license issued by the Commonwealth.
So, so there's, there's.
That's $69 itself.
Right, so there's a lot of other permits that come to it. So, you know, the idea of, and these folks are not out there, they're not like your McDonald's, or, you know, someone that's making like hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, a year. These are, you know, hardworking people, so the idea of increasing it, to me, I'm not a big fan. But moving on, there was, I had a question about donation collections bins.
I'm, I'm sorry, donation collection bins? I put them in sort of as an afterthought. The clerk's office really only collects the fee, but the ordinance itself is an ordinance that, again, I think the truck vendors license kind of was a spinoff from that. And it's going to, it goes through the Inspection Service Office. But it's kind of a hybrid, because the clerk's office collects the fee. I, I have, you know, I just put it in there most, again, for informational purposes.
Does anyone actually, like, come in, like, does my church go in and it's like, hey, I'm going to pay a fee?
We had one applicant for, for a bin, a collection bin, in the last two years since its inception. And they, they just withdrew their application.
Okay, so I, I mean, that, that kind of goes in line with the question Counselor Plant had said. Like, it might not make sense for us to increase something that is not necessarily used.
Well, I, I would, I would let you know, though, as counselors, that donation bins are not what they appear to be. They are extreme moneymakers for those who sponsor them. They are very big corporate industry. They're not what you think if you're thinking that they're for church. They're not what you think if you're thinking that they're for churches and bazaars and things of that nature. Donations is the manner in which they receive, but not the manner in which they distribute.
Okay. But it doesn't sound like we're doing anything to enforce them. So you're saying that they're-
I think, I think the inspectional service office was very good at enforcing it, and certainly as it was coming into fruition. It was, I would suggest it very advisedly, that it was the enforcement that kind of scared the petitioner away.
Okay. My last question is around the, or two movers. Right now, it's at five, five dollars, I think, furniture movers. Were people getting licenses to move furniture? I know there's people that have, like, you know, small little businesses on that.
I thought the same thing you're thinking right now. I can hear you thinking the wheels are grinding, that's why I get a little grin on my face, because I ran into the same issue. I said, what the heck is that all about, basically? And, and looking at it and starting the research, I racked my brain, I says, there's got to be a reason I have not seen a license ever since I've been here in the last fourteen years. And digging and digging and digging, inadvertently, I ran across a DPW regulation for people who move, consign, not consignment, but I'm trying to think of the term, anyway, move, that move furniture, move anything. They're required to get a state license. It's regulated by the Department of Public Utilities, the city of Lawrence has no authority to do anything with it.
Okay. Thank you. And with the, my last question's, the pole locations, I see that we're increasing it by ten dollars to forty, but I see that Haverill has it at a hundred dollars. I mean, is there a reason why theirs is so high?
I didn't ask the clerk in Haverill why theirs was so high, but I can almost guesstimate. You see them coming through, pretty much trying to rent off of Verizon and place multiple things on a single pole, and that's what they do, they rent. And you tax, I don't mean you, I mean, the city taxes Verizon. Verizon's a taxpayer, and then they rent out and they charge accordingly. Pole locations are sort of a secondary tax, an unseen tax, if you will. That's my only guess on that one, why it's probably a hundred dollars. We had, they only, this city only imposed that fee probably, I want to say, four, three, four years ago now, and approved it at thirty dollars. It could stand an increase, I think, without really, you know, breaking the bank, but again, just keep in mind that a lot of these fees, as you're suggesting, all of them across the board, impact the users, and they are direct user fees. And this one is more of an indirect user fee, because it taxes the owner of the pole, which is generally National Grid or Verizon.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, a question for you. When do you think would be, you know, if we wanted to make suggestions about any changes, when would the time for that to happen? Would it be at this council meeting, would it be here? Okay, well, I'll wait to see if anybody else has any other questions, and then I'll make some motions.
So, I should have started with this, but just listening to the discussion helped me fill up this question. The philosophical purpose of a fee, what is your thought? I know that's more of a policy, and you're more of an implementer, but a fee is, you just mentioned it in passing, a user fee, as you just mentioned, so I think we're on to something there, right? So, why do you think-
I think at a grassroots level, as a city clerk in a city like Lawrence, I mean, a fee is supposed to really reflect what, what effort is, it takes to really, to really generate the service. And based upon what we're looking at, and not only in relation to other cities and towns, I think we're well under that watermark in terms of the amount of monies that we generate for the efforts that we daily, we put in daily in terms of paper, copying machine, labor, all the other things that go into generating one birth certificate. Is it equal to or about that fee? Yeah, it is, for the most part. There are fees that act like tariffs, or act like prohibitors, which are called upon and certainly by people in political positions for reasons of better community, community look, and things of that nature, and what functions are allowable in the community reduces some activities. There are fees that are done in that way. I don't necessarily buy into that myself, but I think if you do impose a fee, it should be tailored to the service.
That's right. So I think you're right. So I think that our property tax and real estate taxes are used for general government, where we pay for the roads, the plowing, the police department, the fire department, and all the general functions that require the city to operate. And these fees are above and beyond, because these are organizations usually, or individuals, who are looking to do something either, there, I guess in many of these cases, but not all, and this is what intrigues me, like the dog license, are we now, is that to pay, for example, the potentially the dog officer, the animal control officer? Because why else would we have a dog collar or a dog license?
License fee.
Unless it's, you know, to make sure that the dog has been, had vetted and has all the shots and rabies, maybe that's, I'm not sure if that's a requirement that we check on when we give the license, I don't know.
Yeah, we, in fact, that is one of the, probably the only requirements, the rabies, the rabies certificate, which will also show whether a dog is neutered or spayed, and of course, the owner wants to get that break as to a dog that's neutered or spayed. Again, in general, if you look at the, either whether you look at a horizontal view or longitudinal view of all the fees and expenses and manpower and costs that go into generating, or that you want to justify the charging of any particular fee, I think these are the most innocuous, that run through, that ones particularly that run through a clerk's office. They somewhat reflect to a great degree, and I certainly understand what the counselors are saying in terms of, yeah, you get an ice cream vendor, a popcorn vendor, I mean, do you really want to knock them dead with a five hundred dollar fee to get the license? I mean, it doesn't seem to be congruous.
So that's going to be the prism that, if we're going to go down this road of going through each one of these, and this could be a very lengthy, we'll be here long, if we're going through this tonight, each one of these, then that's going to be the prism by which I make the decision, which is, what's the purpose of the fee? Why are we having this fee? And does it cover whatever that purpose is? And we may be surprised through our discussions that that fee of X number of dollars that was charged, because we just have this, we didn't, when you went through this process, you were trying to, this is, I think what I understand, was you looked at other communities, and you said, what are they charging? I'm looking at it as, not always what other communities are charging necessarily, but what should the proper amount be based on, the level of effort that we use as a city to do whatever it is that these fees and licenses are supposed to do? That's my prism. It could be up, it could be down, we have a three hundred dollar ceiling, so we can only go so high on these, but that's how I'm looking at it.
I mean, I could follow you, Counselor, in a detailed look and start doing a map of each one of the, let's see, man-hours it takes to put into making a birth certificate. The hour, the cost of the use of a copying machine, and divide that by three hundred sixty-five, and divide that by the number of, you know, that would take me probably about eight years. So I'm prepared to do it if you want to go one at a time, but I think it's superfluous, and I think it defeats the purpose. I can tell you as a general matter, that the fees that are charged in relation to what is done here, I can almost tell you to each fee, and I'll just focus on vital records. The amount that is charged for vital records is not even close to the effort that goes into the overall operation, not even close.
Okay. So, so let me just make this final comment, which is, there is, it is frustrating for a consumer or a citizen to come into an office, and we say to that individual or consumer, well, if you really want this, this is going to cost you X dollars. And in that person's mind, they're saying, why are you charging me this amount of money? What am I getting for that amount of money? And what they're getting for that amount is the ability to do whatever that license is or whatever. What we as a government are trying to say is, this is how much it costs us to give you that ability to do it, above and beyond, is the money that we get from taxes, we want it to go to the police department, the library, the fire, all the other places, that's what we want philosophically. We don't want to have these special interests, if you will, come in and start usurping city resources when we could be spending on other things, so we devise these things called fees to pay for it. That's the whole principle behind this. So now, I'm thinking, and I understand this thing, maybe we have a different opinion, and I purely under, I feel fully sympathetic, this is not an exercise for you to take eight years, although it's a great job enhancer, because you say, I'm almost done now, I only have seven more years to go, right? So that's a great thing.
Job security.
Exactly, job security, right, so that's great, but that's not the goal here. So we try to figure out, as reasonably as we can, an estimate to that, not precisely to the penny, but we can say to a constituent, well, we're charging you the junk dealer license for three hundred and fifty bucks, because that's a reasonable amount of time and effort that we get to do X, Y, and Z. If there's something happens, we have to respond to it, or whatever it is, we can, we have to rationalize it, that's my point.
Well, again, looking at it from an administrative standpoint, and certainly as opposed, or probably in conjunction with the political standpoint on it, what I would tell you is that I think it'd be an entire waste of time to start nickel and diming as to what every cent is spent in time, money, or effort.
That's not what I'm saying, by the way.
As administrators, we tend to look at overall. And I would tell you this much, that, first of all, the city clerk, as we say, pulls in about, we'll say, two hundred thousand. The clerk's office runs on two hundred and fifty thousand, so we're losing fifty thousand as it stands, or two hundred and sixty thousand. And the same pretty much with any department that you want to pick throughout the city. And that's really the comparison, not a one-for-one comparison. Certainly if something is out of line, and I would voice it myself, I've said it here tonight, I think the dog license fee for fifty dollars is out of line. I think it's, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't have the effect that it was intended, and it's not having the effect it was intended, which is to penalize people who do not have their animals neutered, their dogs neutered. And that's not what's happening. What's happening is people are not coming in to license their dogs, and that's what I'm saying.
So let me offer this, and I'm going to ask my colleagues here for their wise counsel on how we should proceed. It is now nine o'clock. We have, I don't, I would rather us not go past ten this evening, and at this rate, we are going to go past ten. So in order to try to manage this just a little bit better, we can, we have two other items here. We have appropriation transfers, we have new voting machines, depending on where the council wants, the committee wants to go, we could be here for quite some time, and I'm not adverse to putting the time into this, I'm just wanting, tonight's the right time to do that. So maybe what we could do is this, is maybe we can, I think that these other ones may be a little less intensive, let's see if we can get, maybe we can table this for now and see if we can come back to this, if time permits, on these, on these fees, and then let's kick these other ones out, and then let's give ourselves till ten, let's see how far we can get. If we don't get it done tonight, we'll stop right there, and we'll come back again, and we'll take it up. There's no need, we got to get this one to be-
Well, I'll save you a little time. The recommendations I make, I'm standing by, if, I'm not going to change it much, and it's based solely on comparative with other communities, and what I know the fees are charged and the effort that goes in. I'm not going to really change much from there, there's not much more I can add to that. So if you'd like to take them, table the matter and review the items, that's fine, I think that's probably the best bet, because they are reasonable, they're reasonable in relation to, from my standpoint, and I don't, I don't mean to invade upon your province to either approve or not approve. And if you wish to look at each one of them, I'm going to go down the line and say, I think that's a reasonable fee, and that's a reasonable increase. And my answer's going to be the same. I've gone through that already with each one of these.
Okay. And that's fine. So I'm not here to dig on this particular matter.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question. I know the Council President and I have spoken about, maybe not this specific, but sort of this idea that he had, he was going to speak to you around something like this. So it sounded like he was trying to work this through, necessarily as quick as possible, but it sounded like he had like a deadline. Is there any sense of, sense of time on this? Because if there isn't, I-
No, and there was no deadline, and I don't mean to draw, there was no deadline offered to it, and again, to reiterate my initial point, I'm neither advocating or not advocating for any one of these. These are presented because I was asked to present them, because, to bring, primarily to bring us on par with other fees. It was noticed that some of the fees were significantly, or at least somewhat lower, than other communities. In fact, we get that over the counter. Geez, it's so much cheaper to come here. And I don't necessarily see that as a bad thing or a good thing, it doesn't change my day or the effort that we put in.
Okay. So, I mean, there were only three items that I was going to try to change, but I don't think there's a rush on this, so motion to table this item?
And we may come back to it, maybe. Motion to table is made, and second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you. We may come back to this night, we may not, so let's see how this goes. Go ahead. So the next document is one twenty-seven eighteen, appropriation transfers, elections, go ahead, clerk.
Thank you, counselors, document one twenty-seven of two thousand and eighteen. These items, trying to remember which ones I've got before you, I think it's the transfers from, I see them now, okay, thank you. The first item for a transfer, or the transfers are primarily targeted for two things, and I'll go through them individually, what I'm targeting. And the funds, I'll say this as a blanket item, the funds are available as of the FY eighteen budget for transfer. I reviewed them with the overseer, finance director, and chief of staff, Burnell, and the mayor is ready to sign off on them if the council so approves. The amount of the transfer in the first one, five thousand dollars, from elections professional services to council advertising. That's targeted to funnel some funds or additional funds into council advertising. I got about twenty-five hundred dollars left in council advertising, that will be gone within a matter of a couple of weeks. The five thousand dollars, and there'll be other funds to fund that, will be targeted to advertise things like public hearings, the budget, the capital improvement budget, and all those items. The budget alone will be about twenty-five hundred dollars itself, and that's primarily what that's targeted for. The funds are available, they're from a fund that we expected to use in public hearing costs for the Board of Registitors on recall efforts and possible recounts. Neither happened, so better use of those funds. The amount of transfer on the second one, five thousand dollars from same account, professional services, that's the same source, to printing and mailing. Printing and mailing will support the voting list. That is going to be about a fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand all-around trip, I've already allocated about eight thousand, and this will supplement that. It's called the confirmation notice portion of the city census. Those notices go out to voters on the city census who happen to be voters we haven't heard from, and we're asking them, and required by law, asking them if they still are in our city, and if they still want to be considered, registered to vote. Very critical portion of the census. That goes out on June first. And again, there's no question about doing it, if you fail to do it, then your voting list is corrupt. The third, the third item is fifteen hundred dollar transfers from operating supplies, an amount that we have available back into, again, printing and mailing, the same item I just spoke of. There is a mirror amount, these transfers are not permitted to be done directly by the administration. There is a second set of transfers that were already performed and done by the administration that do not require council approval, essentially moving money within the election funds themselves.
I'm not opposed to these, I'm not, because we have to. I got a question. When we do a public hearing notice, this is council advertising, is that where that's coming from?
Yes.
Okay, so hypothetically, when we put something out for a public hearing, per piece, per each public hearing, what's the, is there a typical dollar amount that that's costing us?
We have, I use two publications primarily, I'll call one A and one B, for, so I don't hurt anybody's feelings. The A-list publication that I use charges anywhere between fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight dollars per publication. The B-list charges about one hundred and fifty-one dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars per publication, this size. So when we do the budget, that comes in, one publication will charge us about fifteen hundred dollars, because it's about that big.
Sure. So if it's a regular ordinance- Sure. So if it's a regular ordinance or a public hearing, between both of them, we're talking about $150 to $200?
No. What I opt to-
A and B?
I opt to the A-list.
Oh, you don't put it at a B-list?
No, no. I make every effort to channel everything into the least expensive, the least costly.
Got it.
And that's where I go first. If I use the B-list, it's only because it times out, and I don't have time to publish, or I have to publish in both. Sometimes you guys order publish in both.
Thank you.
Sometimes. Like the budget. Budget's published in both publications, to capture everybody.
Okay. I don't have any questions on this. Does any committee members have questions on this?
I'd like to place a motion to approve this favorable recommendation to the full council.
Motion's been made. Second in discussion. Here now, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose none of the ayes have it. Moving on. Clerk, the next one is the voting machines, 13718. Yes, sir? Go ahead.
This I place on the agenda, again, I'm going to duck behind Council Levy, who seems to be leading the charge on voting machines. As a former poll worker, she probably understands most how the machines operate and why they are beginning to fail. I started this crusade, and it's turned, it seemed to have turned into a crusade, but it's, to me, it's a no-brainer as a capital improvement project in 2014, which was, you know, has never been funded as a capital improvement project. And I always urge the councilors whenever you ask, and I think you might recall, some conversations I might have had with any of you, that you really should be funding, you know, new machinery, new voting machines every year, so when you time them out, or when they become due, or you've got to get new equipment, the money's there. And it sounds like the capital improvement project. We're experiencing the same thing with the voting booths now. Those were purchased, I want to say, 2011, maybe 2010 now, but they're out of warranty. They're beginning to show wear and tear, timed obsolescence, planned obsolescence. And those should also be funded by IDV. The voting machines themselves, they're good. They work very well. AccuVote is a tremendous product. You see them when you go out to the voting booths, and you see them when you go out to the voting and poll locations. They're maintained very well. They're a specialty item. If there's a glitch in them, I get them fixed right away, no matter what. And we are on a hefty contract annually to repair them and keep them in good repair. You all own cars. You do the same thing with the cars. Picture now, your car is 28 years old, been maintained meticulously, and I want you to take a ride with me to New York City, and we're going to be driving on the road for 13 hours straight. And I've got AAA, but doesn't matter. If that machine breaks, that car breaks, that voting machine breaks, I can't use it the rest of the day. I can get it fixed after the election's done, but now there are a lot of questions that come into play. Candidates want to know, "Why did that machine break? How many votes did I miss? Did it cause a line to turn people away?" Things like that. I met, I had two machines go down between elections, at the end of 2016's election, I'm sorry, 2017 election, council's election, and the mayor, I'm sorry, my apologies, 2016, the presidential election, and I had to have repaired, and that was just refurbished. It had to be refurbished. It was in such bad shape, and it went from Diamond Springs. The other machine went down during this past election, and that was the library, and that had to go to hand count. And we were there till probably about 11:00, 11:30, if you, councilor, you remember. You kept calling in, I remember.
That wasn't me.
I know it wasn't. I'm just, I'm just saying, but this is what it entails. It's not, let me explain it this way. You're not permitted to replace a machine unless it's been tested and ready for backup, ready to go in combat before the election, four days at least. If the machine goes down and you don't have a backup, you cannot replace it. You have to do a hand count. And that hand count is costly, not only in time and effort by the poll workers, which they are so good to us, and they stay and they do their job. On the other end, I can't stop a candidate for filing complaints, filing requests to review the election or recount, which is, by the way, a recount, if that happens. I sat down with the, on these concerns between September and November, I sat down with our provider, the technicians, and their words, not mine, "The machines are 28 years old. What do you expect? They're going to slowly degenerate, and they're going to slowly break down one at a time." And they showed me how to, what I'm listening for in terms of a machine that might be on its way out. They make a certain sound, and you can hear it, as opposed, as opposed, and they demonstrated, the ones that are in good running order. They're very smooth, very easily to run. And there's no problem, no problem with them. What I wanted to do is not only bring that to your attention, and the reason why I keep proposing this and keep proposing this. It's not because I desire new machines, although I do. I, this I advocate for constantly, and been doing it since 2014. They are necessary. It's just, it's not, it's not a question of, you know, why, when. And it could be this election, it could be the next election. I can't predict which machines are going to go down. I don't know, even with the expertise of our provider, which machines are going to break. They fix them to the degree that they are operable to a maximum, you know, maximally operable. In addition to that, and overlaying all that, there's a process to replace machines, or replace machines if you're going to replace them entirely throughout the city, which is what the Secretary of State's office recommends, that you not do it partially. It's not going to allow a plan for a partial replacement. It will only recommend entire replacement. The council is the authority in this city to vote for, we'll say, the decertification of machines, but before decertification, you better have a machine in place. So certification of machines in place. Those have time factors. The time factors for putting in a machine, a machine system in place is 120 days before the election. That timeframe is coming up for the September 4th election, a state election will be coming on as of May 9th. I'm not in any rush. I suggest, and sat down with finance this week, and asked, you know, geez, you know, if this happens and that happens, you know, what is your timeframe? When do we got to go out to bid? When do we have to have a contract in place? And if the money is available, you know, what are we looking for in timeframes?
Clerk, could I interrupt you?
Sure.
And you, all that you've said, I can understand. You know this better than probably any of us. Any, let me ask you the question. What is the purpose of this proposal? You've sold me. I get it. We need, we need a machine.
I want to get this on the table before you guys, so I don't have to wait to get it on the table or get it to the full council level. I suggest it probably should go up to the full council level and be tabled there, rather than come back to committee, if it needs to come back to committee to refer it back down to committee.
But you're looking, are you looking for money to be able to purchase these new equipment?
Always, always. But that is, and I didn't mean to, and I don't mean to interrupt you, that is really the first piece of the puzzle.
Sure.
Unless, unless, and I'm not looking for money by this petition. It can be presented at any time in terms of an appropriation, and that's the only mechanism by which I can get this back before the council.
Right. So as we all know, we can't initiate an appropriation process. That has to come from the mayor. Even though all of us may say, "You know something else? We want to fund it. We want to get you the extra super warranty, and everything will be gold-plated, and we'll have a lifetime warranty and all that." We can't do that, obviously. So, again, I'll ask your plan here. You know how this works, so.
Yes, I do.
So what's?
This is the other shoe. What you're talking about is the first shoe. I'm talking about the other shoe. If that comes down the pike, this one's ready to go. This part of the shoe, which is the certification and decertification process, which is a whole separate animal. That's what this is, and that's what I'm asking you to consider it.
So to help me understand that a little bit more. So the two steps. Step one, we can't do. We can't initiate the appropriation, so we can't get the money for that. And you know that we, you've got to convince the mayor to send it down to us, so that we can have a vote on it, or else we can't do it.
Right.
That's step one. Step two, you're talking about decertification, so I just want to help, I don't know if I fully understand that portion. So what are we doing now?
In my mind, as you're presenting the first shoe, and then you are correct. You are absolutely correct, 100%. Once the appropriation is in place, then the council can move to certify and decertify, based upon what is being purchased. This mechanism will allow me to continue, at some point, once we get the appropriation, to start that mechanism. It is my hope and suspicion that if not by, if not by initiative from the administration, but by public outcry, or if not by lawsuit, that this will, this will come to fruition within the year. The optimum year would be next year.
And this is, decertification or certification deals with the actual, the machine itself, and there's that six-month window that you just started to talk about. And so what you're trying to do is save time.
That's correct.
By actually have this on the agenda, and then the moment that it happens, we already have this document ready to go vote on almost, almost immediately.
If you would so permit me to work within the document and leave it, and move it up to the full council, I could do that. It would expedite things.
I get it. I get it. Maybe the best course of action, clerk, is to see if my colleagues have any questions on this. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just two quick questions. How old are the machines?
28.
28 years. How much would it cost to get all full, full new machines?
All new machines, the last estimate in January 10th was $150,000.
$150,000. Okay. And now to my statement. I think part of the reason this is up is I know Councilor Levy, you know, I think she's, you know, I've heard her advocate for this. I think that's one of the reasons that she's, you know, she's pushing this. So I think it's great that the clerk is here to talk about this, because this is important. I think in all of our elections, you know, we constantly have seen machines break down. And from the moment that a machine breaks down, everybody, I mean, people, maybe ourselves, we're not thinking this, but, you know, I know that I've gotten calls in the last election, volunteers being like, "Hey, I'm in Prospect Hill, I'm in Mount Vernon. A machine broke down. What's going on?" And the first thing that people think is, there's something sketchy going on. And this is like every candidate, and every, and maybe not the candidates, but the people that are working for them, the people that are going to vote, are, they start doubting the process. And I think one of the most important parts of our democracy is our election, and we don't want our constituents to doubt the process. What we're looking at is $150,000. We just approved half a million for two removals. It's important, right? We've approved, you know, other amounts as well, coming from free cash. But here we have something that's integral to our democratic process. You know, it sounds like the clerk has done all that he can, and I think one of the reasons that this is up in front of us today is so that the councilors themselves could have a better idea of what's going on, and understanding that it's not one or two machines that are old and about to break down. It's all the machines are old and about to break down. And honestly, that's, I find that very scary, especially knowing that, you know, in every general election, there's going to be a lot of people that are, you know, more and more people are going to be going out to vote. And the idea that one day, you know, it's the Titanic, and two-thirds of the machines break down, what happens then? And I really think that, you know, we should not make it get to that, so I, you know, I would definitely employ my fellow council members to speak with the mayor, and I'd love to see this, have this full discussion at the city council meeting, because I think that we need to sort of have a discussion with the mayor and see where he's at with this. So I think I'm gonna, you know, once the discussion period ends, you know, I want to move this, I want to vote, motion for this to go to the full council, but I would also like a request to be put in that somebody from the mayor's office is here to discuss, what is their plan with this? Are they going to, you know, is, do they have plans to change the voting machines, or are they just putting this on for, for another year?
If I may interject on one thing, and again, I don't want to throw a scare into your constituents and certainly the voters. The machines are in good working order. They're all in repair. It's when they start an operation that becomes the gamble. And it's not going to be, as you suggest, two-thirds of the machines going down. It's going to be hit or miss. And that's what our supplier is telling us. And if it happens during the, certainly during the critical point in the election, which is any time during the 13 hours, there are things that I can do to get the machine up and running, if it's a simple jam, paper jam, which is more likely than not. But the way the machine operates and the spacing and all that stuff, and the mechanisms themselves cause those jams. And then we clear the jam all day long. It's when the machine actually fails entirely. And again, I've only had two in the last election. I'm, again, advisedly hope there'd be none, because I get a clean bill of health when they send them out to repair. We have an annual contract. They're repaired. They're ready to go, and they're certified, ready to go. It's, again, through the use. In the, in the alternative, we could repair the machines, $1,500 a machine, but that's a $36,000 bill, if that is an alternative as well. There's every, every alternative has been explored and looked at. The only downside to that is the machines are no longer being made. So what the company has done is scavenge the machines from every community that goes around getting new machines. They take the old ones as part of the buyback and reduce their costs. The last thing I would tell you is that on the outside, our interest groups that keep asking me, "When are you replacing the machines?" I've got all the communities, I didn't say all the communities. I've got other communities in the city, come out of Massachusetts, replacing machines and/or throwing, north and or. How come Lawrence hasn't done it? And I say, "I don't know." I don't know if any action will be taken until they become critical at some point. I can tell you this much. I anticipate that there'll be severe breakdowns during the November election. We're expecting double ballots, double-sided, legal size. These machines and the receptacles they're built on, or sit on, are not designed to take that size ballot.
And my only question is, when you talked to the mayor about this, what's been their response?
I'm sorry?
When you've talked to the mayor about this, what has been their response? Because-
It hasn't been positive. I mean, it hasn't been that they'd be funded. I've even asked since 2014 to fund it as a capital improvement.
Has he provided any rationale as to why?
Not enough money. But again, this is not, I don't want to be in a position here to say between you and the mayor that this is what's going on. I can only tell you, I'm here to report to you that I'm having difficulty keeping these machines online and in operations because the machines are so old. That's it. I've made proposals to purchase in efforts to start sending this out to bid, but that's not what I want to tell you about mostly. This is the other shoe. When it becomes necessary, or the opportunity arises that machines are available, it's about a six-to-eight month process. The optimum time to start doing this is right after the next election in November, after the state election, and dovetail it into the next election cycle, which would be a city cycle.
So I completely understand that. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. But I think it's also part, part of our job is to figure out what the plan is, you know? And perhaps the plan is to repair them instead of get new ones, or, you know, so, you know, at the moment, since we don't know the plan, I think there's a little bit of, I wouldn't say a fear factor, you know, I can't find the right word, but I think we need to ensure that we have an idea of what the mayor's office is planning on doing with this, especially since we're running against time for this election this year.
The last discussion I have with Director Iannello is that, my sense is that they're getting ready to stop funding a capital improvement plan on it, and that they're looking to fund it, whether that is compelled by, compelled by an immediate appropriation as spurned and required by the administration and subject certainly to council approval, or whether that's over a course of a number of years. I don't know yet. That's not been decided. But the first shoe that you talk of council plant has got to be an appropriation. None of this comes to fruition without an appropriation.
So you just buried the lead. So after all this, the mayor's already made some sort, or through Mark Iannello, has already made some sort of comment that there's going to be an insertion into the- already made some sort of comment that there's gonna be an insertion into the capital improvement plan of the CIP for this, which you don't know the specifics.
I hope so, yeah.
You don't know the specifics, you don't know the timeframe, but you do know there's gonna be something.
I'm sorry, you said, you hope so, or he is?
I hope so, because it's only been a discussion with Mr. Iannello at this point, that whether, you know, they're looking at different options.
So let's, I got an idea. Why don't we do this? Why don't we invite Mr. Iannello to come here to give us where they are, if they're going forward with this in the CIP, maybe talks about the CIP in general, which may be a part of this, but at least, and that's part of your, part of the question, I think Mr. Piana was asking, is what's the plan? And maybe that is the plan.
Maybe it is.
I don't know. So right now, we're just grasping at straws. We're asking you questions, you don't have all the answers, because you just don't know what other thinking is. So let's just get the answers, and then we can tell our colleagues, here's, we've done our proper investigation, we, here's the deal, we know this is going up, this is what the deal is, and this is the plan. Right now, we don't know, what's it gonna, so that's my recommendation.
That sounds more reasonable, because again, I don't think it'd be controversial if they're going to offer a plan and purchases is eminent.
Yeah, I know. So, let me recommend this, and if the committee so chooses, we can adopt it. My recommendation is that we send a letter to the Budget and Finance Director referencing this document item and asking if there is a plan in place, or what the plans are to, if there are any, to fund new voting machines. Very simple.
So moved.
There's a motion that's been made, and it has been, second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Now, I know you've been waiting to come back to this, Mr. Clerk, and it's time to go back to the fees. We have half an hour.
Whatever you'd like.
Are you tabling that?
We, is our motion to table? Thank you.
So moved.
Motion made, and second, all in favor say aye, the ayes have it. There's a motion to take back off the table, document one eighteen eighteen, fees.
So moved.
Motion made, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So now, let's make the best use of our time. Here's what we know. We know that we have a list of fees, recommended fees based on research from other communities, comparative research. The clerk is gonna stick by his numbers, because he's done the research on this, and we can go ahead and still ask questions if we'd like.
And may, totally subjective and objective, partial objective results.
Right. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Piana.
Thank you. So I'd like, so I don't have any questions, I think you gave a great presentation. I see where you're going with these fees, and for several of them, I, you know, I would agree with the increases, especially when the other towns in the areas have it the same or higher. So I'd like to make a motion to change the dog license neutered from the two thousand eight increase of five dollars twenty to fifteen, so basically to ensure that it doesn't, so that there is no increase.
So the, this is for my colleagues here, this is probably the fifth one down on the first page. Dog, not neutered or dog neutered?
Dog neutered.
Dog neutered. From fifteen and keeping it at fifteen...
Keeping it at fifteen. So my reasoning behind that is this. So I think for most of the fee increases, what we've seen is that in the other communities, they have a higher amount. For the dog license neutered, you know, at the moment, we have one of the highest fees, which is fifteen dollars. I think the, what we want to have is for people to get this license, you know, and the reason we want people to get this license is because with that comes the, we know where the dog is at, and we also can ensure that the dog is properly, has, have the proper vaccinations. Well, we might not think that five dollars is not a lot, you know, when we're dealing with a very working-class community, any type of increase couldn't be the decision-maker for whether or not they're gonna get the license or not. So in my mind, if there was a, you know, I, it's unfortunate that we can't make it free, because there isn't actual cost to this, but I think with this, we should make it as easy as possible for an individual to come in and get their dogs licensed.
So what we should do is this, so if we're gonna go through these, and I'm, if we're gonna go down the rabbit hole, I'm all in. I'm going down deep and deep and hard.
And Councilor Plant, it's...
I'm gonna have the right choice of words there, but I'm all in. That's my point.
Okay.
So if we're gonna go through this, let's start from the top, and then we can go to that one, as we get to that one, and if you wanna make a motion?
So...
We'll start with that one right now? It's just refreshing.
Yeah, so I mean, so, so there are...
If I may suggest, rather than deal with each individual one by motion, if you reach a consensus, then if you wanna, like we do with the budget, at the very end, if you say, you know, you've reached a consensus, all in favor, aye, aye, if that, unless you really wanna debate an individual one.
So I have a question for you. So, Councilor Plant, do you have, would you like to change each single one?
Yes, every single one. I wanna look at. I'm going, I told you, I want, if we're going in on this, we're going in.
That's what he said.
We're going in.
That's what I thought he said.
Hold on a second. Put your seatbelt on, we're going in.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So, but you, you're going to make a motion to try to change each line item?
I can't make a motion, as you know.
Okay, so you're gonna suggest, you're gonna suggest to make a motion to change each line item?
Perhaps. I may keep it the same, because it may make sense to me.
Okay.
But I don't know that yet.
Okay, so I mean, if that's the, if that's the process that you wanna go with, I will support that. So we can, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're getting paid to be here, so, you know, I'm willing to stay for as long as, you know, we need to. I have, there are only three changes.
You wanna do yours first? I don't mind doing that.
Sure.
Let's go for it.
So, all right, so, so those are my reasons behind wanting to lower the dog license neutered.
Is there a motion to reduce? Well, no, no, a motion to keep it there. There's no need a motion.
Don't need, it's, there's no change.
There's no change. We just leave it the way it is. We're just not gonna change this one. So I'm not sure how we're gonna identify it.
How do we?
So now what we're gonna do, we're gonna take some creative impulse here, and we're gonna put a number after each one of these. So birth certificate will be number one, then it's the next birth certificate, each line will have a number to it, all the way down, so then we can say doc at number seven or number eight, whatever we're talking about. So as we go through that, so this one right here would be number seven. And I'll just go through it as we go through it. So number seven, when we get to the right point, there won't be potentially no motion on that one, because you wanna leave it the way it is.
Okay, I mean...
All right. So what's your next question?
The chair, so we'll go with that. The next one is transient vendor license, let me see. I have number thirty-nine?
Okay, I don't know, I'm not there yet.
Come on, Councilor Plant, you can count faster than that.
I really can't, I gotta keep my, my shoes are on, it's very challenging. Transient vendor, I have thirty-nine. All right, so we're good. So let's go ahead.
So I would like to keep that the same as well. I...
Can't keep that one?
I mentioned earlier that I think these individuals, there is enough, there's other permits that they're, they have to pay into, so they're putting money to the city in other ways as well. This is not just the only permit that they have to take out. The council president and I were just meeting with them a few days ago, and one of their big issues was that, like, hey, like, you know, we have to pay so much money, and it's not like we're making tons of money doing this business anyways, after they pay their employees and everything else, so...
You got another one?
Then the last one is...
And let's start from number one again on this, on the next page. Wait a second. No, 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 we shouldn't do that.
We shouldn't do that. Well, I don't see location polls here on the first page.
That's right, what do you have?
Just for clarity, the two pages you're looking at, the one with the statutory references is probably the one you should be using to look at that you started counting numbers against. The other one is really the comparative, because it's not really matched, it doesn't match up directly.
Got it.
So we're working off of the first page.
So where is the location polls conduit on the first page? I don't think it's there.
That's on line number thirty-eight.
Okay, so I was wrong.
Order polls, here you go.
All right, so I would like to increase that to fifty. My reason behind that is, you know, I see that Haverhill has it at a hundred dollars. I can completely understand the point that, you know, these folks, these companies are using these polls, they're probably making, you know, business out of that, because they're able to have other people, other companies lease those polls, so I think, you know, increasing it from thirty to fifty would be a good idea.
Those are your thoughts, those are your...
Okay, so, that's it.
We'll leave that there, we'll come back to them in a bit. Let's start off with number one. What's the level of effort on the birth certificate certified copy?
I'm sorry, sir?
Level of effort, how much time, what kind of effort do you put in this? For each, somebody comes in, wants a certified copy, what kind of time, level of effort?
Roughly...
And materials?
Five, ten minutes in service. Certification of a document, sometimes it takes more, sometimes it takes an hour, sometimes it takes two hours, sometimes it takes days.
So...
Hence, it depends.
Okay.
But on the average, on the average, I'd say about maybe ten, fifteen minutes.
Ten or fifteen minutes of somebody's staff time, which includes personnel, staff time, benefits, all the other kinds that goes with it, right? So just a ballpark of that.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the average clerical cost per person in your office, just roughly?
Per hour?
I could look that up. Actually, why am I asking you?
Per hour?
Look that up. And then, and then once we have this one number, which should be good throughout this whole exercise.
I gotta get used to these, because the budget's coming.
What's gonna happen?
I said, the budget's coming, I gotta get used to these numbers. I'm trying to figure what, I'm trying to get on the same train of thought you're at.
So this is coming out of the city clerk's office, correct?
Right, but I'm trying to figure, are you talking about yearly, hourly, daily?
We can figure it out. So who would typically do this? A senior clerk, generally speaking, would deal with this?
Varies.
Varies?
It varies. Usually it could be the assistant clerk, it could be clerk, it could be, yeah, a senior clerk, but lowest level is senior clerk.
Okay. Give me a second, a little math. So, senior clerk, it's this much, let's say? And let's see, fifty-two year, fifty-two weeks in a year, correct?
Fifty-two point two this year.
Divided by fifty-two. And then each week, we, how many hours, thirty-seven hours a week? Thirty-seven, five, thirty-five? How many?
Thirty-seven point five.
Thirty-seven point five hours is how much we do, okay? So it's essentially forty dollars an hour for a senior clerk.
Divided by four?
Divided by four?
Yeah, it takes about ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay, that's right, yeah, so I just, that's our number, four, is forty bucks an hour, and plus benefits and all that kinda stuff. Can we just say fifty bucks and just make it for a nice ballpark? Fifty bucks, including benefits, everything else, and that's probably still shortchanging it. So for a quarter of fifteen bucks is what? Twelve dollars and fifty cents?
Twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
Plus cost of copying.
Twelve dollars and fifty cents is what, and plus copying cost? And you're saying that we...
And the cost of running the copying machine.
And you're saying the proposed change is ten bucks? I agree with you. I think we should do that, I think that makes a lot of sense to me, and we can probably do it a little bit more, but if you wanna go to ten, I can go with that. So let's do this. Is there a motion, we're gonna go through each one of these as we go through it, makes it easier, is there a motion to increase number one to ten dollars? No, you don't have to make it?
Yes, I'm just, I'm doubting if that's the, couldn't we, so, go, all right, so let's do it that way. I mean, I thought that it might have been more efficient to see where the changes were gonna be, and, 'cause I saw the document that, essentially what he's proposing is ten dollars.
Yeah.
So in order to decrease it or increase it, you would have to make a motion.
We're gonna have to make a motion to increase this one anyway, 'cause we're gonna go from seven to ten. But we can, so there's a lot of ways we can do it. We can either, look, I can look at both of you, and you're like, yeah, that's a good one, we should go with that, and we can just wait till the end, and I can say, we got out of these, you might have a problem with number twenty-six, and say, you know something, that's ridiculous. Or I might have a problem with it, or somebody, and then we may do it. So, so there's two ways to do it. I can either, if you just give me an informal yes or no on that, we can do it, or we can make a motion.
Okay, let's just make a motion.
A motion.
Sorry, so maybe make a motion to increase it from seven to ten dollars.
Is there a motion made, and is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye, the ayes have it. As an amendment to this whole, let's make the underlying amendment. Is there a motion to send this up to the council with a favorable recommendation? Let's start off with that. The overall...
Shouldn't we amend this first?
No, we can make amendments to it afterwards. So we're gonna, this is the underlying document.
Uh-huh.
If you're comfortable with this, we just, underlying document, the whole thing, and then we're either, we're either going to reduce or cut it.
So I'd be more comfortable making the changes, and then, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter. All right, yeah.
'Cause we're making an amendment to this, 'cause now we're amending this from ten to seven. Or no, no, we're keeping this the same, but there may be one right here that you've got, we're gonna make an amendment on it later.
Amending it seven to ten, okay. I'm gonna follow you, doesn't, it doesn't, to me, it sounds like he's proposing ten, or the council president's proposing ten dollars.
Yes, and we're gonna keep it there. You're actually right, so we're not gonna make a motion on this one, because it's gonna be the, the, so underlying, the under, bear with me. Would you please just make a motion to send this up with a favorable recommendation? There will be no amendment on the first one, because part of the underlying, it already has a ten dollar.
So you want me to send this whole thing?
And then we're gonna, if there's gonna be a change, which there isn't on number one, we're gonna leave that alone.
Right. So why would we send, if we vote on sending the whole thing?
Yeah.
Without making those amendments, that's two, almost two separate.
But we're gonna go through each one of these, so that if I find one, we're gonna make an amendment.
So what I would...
We're gonna change it.
What I would say, and it's crazy that we're debating process here, right? What I would think is for us to make the amendments and then vote to send it to the full council.
Either way.
Most respectfully, that would take longer. What the council plant is suggesting is, let's go through, make a motion to send it up full council, go through them all, if there's one that you disagree on, that's the one you make the motion on to change.
Yeah.
Okay.
In a negative.
Okay, all right, that, that's, he explained it a little bit better.
I'm sorry, I'm not, words are not my business, so...
All right, so, so a motion to send this to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. So on number one, there's gonna be no amendment, we're gonna leave it as it is. On number two, birth certificate short form, form, that's from five to zero, apparently we're not charging anybody anything.
What I'm suggesting to the council is that we discontinue the short form, which is actually the size of an index card.
Okay.
Increasingly, as we go through time, they're being rejected by various agencies. What I'm beginning to see now as a clerk, is that the agent, that people are coming They're being rejected by various agencies. What I'm beginning to see now as a clerk is that the agent, that people are coming back and says, "Oh, I can't use that form." Because nobody recognizes anymore. What they're really good for is wallet size or just something to carry around the wallet.
Okay.
If people continue to use them, you know, and then I just end up giving them a birth certificate anyway.
Okay, so that's unchanged. We'll leave it the way it is. There's no need for an amendment. Marriage certificate certified copy, level of effort for that? How much time does a clerk typically use?
Same as, as number one.
So ten or fifteen minutes is typically where the clerk would, would, would generalize, and same amount of paper, et cetera. Not much change.
Same as number one.
Alright. Uh, let's see, death certificate. How much time of effort for that one?
Same as number one.
Ten or fifteen minutes at the clerk's desk. Marriage intention, how much time and effort by the city clerk, or office clerk?
Forty to forty-five minutes.
Forty to forty-five minutes. Alright, so keeping in mind our magic number here is fifty, that's three quarters of an hour, right? So, uh, geez. So it's probably closer to forty dollars. What did you have here?
Twenty-five.
Uh, question. What is the difference between mar- marriage certificate and marriage intention?
Marriage intention is the application. The certificate is once they fill, complete the application, then we issue a certificate. And other people get certificates that are already issued. They come in, they ask for their marriage certificate so they can show their friends.
Okay. Um, I, I mean, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm fine keeping it twenty-five, only 'cause I see that most of the other communities in the area, it's twenty-five dollars.
So I just did, just did the math, thankfully. Uh, if you wanna be precise about this, the, the number's thirty-seven fifty. That's the, that's forty-five minutes worth of time. So, if you wanna go up on it, I'm going, I would recommend going up. If you wanted to go up more with it, that would make sense to me.
I leave it to the council.
So there we have it. Those are my thoughts. So if we're going up, which is a good thing, it needs to be, 'cause we're spending way too much time, now, way more time than we're, we're charging on it. And if we wanted to go more, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
So when you say more, what's more to you?
Well, I already have the math, so the more would be that. Now, I understand you got other competing interests, but I'm more concerned about what's the proper value of the time of our employees working on these issues. That's what I'm interested in.
I'd give my a hundred dollars a minute if I could.
And let me just say this, our employees, some would argue. And I would also argue that our employees are probably less, I mean, I hate to say this, but there's probably other communities who are paying more for, for their clerks and for their things. I don't know that for a fact. That's just me guessing.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would say you're, you're probably right. Um, I, I'm just seeing, I'm looking at Andover, and they're charging twenty-five. I'm looking at Haverhill, and they're charging twenty-five. So, um, I completely see why we need to move it from fifteen to twenty-five. I'm not quite so sure if we should, uh, increase it a whole lot more. Uh, but if we were to, what's, what's that number?
Uh, just for, uh, just because we're not gonna deal with pennies and cents, I would go to thirty-five on that.
Um, and Councilor DePena, what are your thoughts on it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What are your thoughts, Mr. DePena, on this one?
I think the price you have right now is...
The proposed price? The new price? The twenty-five? Is that what it is that we're talking about here?
Yeah, so, 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 Mr. Chair, I, I would ask for it to stay the same.
Okay, well, there you go. I can't beat that, 'cause I can't make the motion. So we're gonna leave it at twenty-five. The next one, dog license. Okay, dog, number, uh, number six? It's, is it number six? Is that the, is that number six?
Uh, yeah, uh, dog license, not neutered. Yes, sir, six.
How much, what's the label?
Time, again, about probably ten, fifteen minutes from customer to entry of the license itself recorded.
Ten to fifteen.
The only addition is that we actually have to pay for the cost of the metal, the license itself and the hook.
So, Mr. Chair, I think.
That's negligible, probably twenty-five cents.
I think the reason that it's fifty, I mean, it's still, it's a lot higher than, um, um, pretty much any town in the region. I, I think even low, has it lower, if I remember correctly. Uh, but the reason for that is so that people, I don't know. I know the clerk said that that's not, um, people are not following that, but the, the reason for it is to get people to neuter their dogs. It sounds like it, uh, maybe that, maybe we could lower it, um, but I don't know.
You said ten to fifteen minutes on that?
Ten to fifteen minutes from, uh, time of customer to licensing.
And, and your proposal's fifty on this, or twenty-five?
Stays the same.
Well, I, I don't make any change on it. That was what the council approved last time out.
So fifty was the propos, the, fifty's where we're looking to put this at? This is number six, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, number six, the, the fifty dollar amount, again, I'm leaning on what the council passed, uh, by vote last time, and that's why I left it there.
Because just based on the level of effort, we're talking about, is we're talking about twelve dollars.
Uh, uh, well, it's probably more than that.
Okay, you just said ten or fifteen.
Yeah, it's still, it's still about, um...
Each clerk is a, a fifty bucks an hour.
It's a, it's a, it's a, maybe a little more, maybe twenty minutes, but I'd say fifteen minutes on the outside.
I'm going with fifteen.
Yeah, but if you want.
I think it's overrated, overcharged.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not arguing. Again, the fifty dollars that is suggested is only because council voted on that by, by unanimous vote last time.
Yeah, and some councils can reconsider their vote if they.
Well, after eight years, I think it's an automatic reconsideration by presenting this.
Um, Mr. Chair, so I, I'm okay with decreasing it. Um, I completely understand your, your point. I think the reason why it's fifty, it was more of a policy choice, not necessarily because it's in line with, um, the time that, um, the clerk's office is spending on it. If you look at other communities, it's a lot lower, and it's more, so for example, and, um, what is it, where, uh, not neutered? It's fifteen, fourteen dollars in Andover, twenty dollars in Haverhill. So, you know, it's kinda aligned with what you're saying.
Alright, so, um, again, I can't make a motion on this, so it's at twelve, it's gonna be at fifty, and it's not moving, right? No one's making a motion, so it's gonna stay. The next one is dog license neutered. The proposed cost is twenty. I'll ask the same question. Level of effort?
The same as we were discussing, uh, around that ten, fifteen minute mark.
So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, change from twenty to fifteen.
It's already at fifteen. It's going to twenty.
So it's going to twenty, so I'm making a motion to amend his document, right?
Yeah, you wanna go back to fifteen again?
Back to fifteen, yes.
Let me just do the math again. You said fifteen minutes to do this, clerk?
Yeah, about ten, fifteen.
I should know this by now, but, um, I have twelve dollars or so. If you wanna go back to fifteen, or keep it as it is, I have no problem with that. But that's, I can't make a motion, so.
So I just made it.
There's a motion to ch, to keep it at fifteen. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
So let's write, and motions have been made, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, no, the ayes have it. So we're gonna keep that at fifteen. I'm gonna write that down. Where should I do that? I think right here.
Number eight is service dogs. That's ordinance and statute, zero.
Okay, we're moving on. Number nine, moving on. Number ten, moving on. Number eleven, permit to excavate.
It, it varies in terms of time, um, between the requirement, to put it through, um, the engineer's office. The whole process takes a half an hour and forty-five minutes. Obtaining license fees, I mean license, uh, releases from various departments, you know, obtain, obtain the permit.
So if we go with, uh, so that's a lot more than, so my other question that we haven't talked about is, you're just, all I'm asking is for is the clerk's office. But are there any other city agencies that would be involved in this?
We interface on these particularly with, um, the engineering office, the water department, the inspectional services department, because they're required to get clearance as to taxation for the property owner.
So there's more work required than what's just in the clerk's office. Oh, so essentially, I'm underestimating the level of effort if I'm just in the clerk's office.
Particularly on these next two items.
So on the previous ones, the birth certificate, then those are definitely just you guys.
Pretty much exclusively the clerk's office.
Dog licenses, what about, I mean, does that go to the animal control? Do they have a part to play in that?
Not unless there's a violation or they're, they're doing something separately, and that they're ordering them to get a dog license. They, nobody usually tells us that.
So the permit to excavate, I got twenty-five dollars, but, but that may go beyond because of ISD. Uh, what's the, uh, does anybody have the other communities? Does that make sense?
There, there is no information on the communities.
I don't, trying to think, uh, let's see, permit.
I have no problem keeping that there.
Neither do I.
Okay, let's move on. Permit to obstruct. Went from forty to zero, or no, forty to fifty, sorry.
Forty to fifty.
What number?
Uh, number twelve.
Twelve.
Same level of effort?
Same, uh.
Everything's the same?
Same process.
Alright, let's, I'm gonna leave, I leave it there. Um, we've got five minutes. I wanna try to, and we're gonna have to come back to this later. It's 'cause, anyway, thirteen?
Council of plan, is the last two stay at fifty?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No changes. And this one right here, you're going down to zero, the underground tanks?
No, no, he's going to fifty.
Number thirteen. Fifty, my numbers, okay.
Number thirteen.
I'm sorry.
I started needing glasses.
I do. I'm losing a lot. My hair, Asian. Go ahead. So that's, uh, level of effort on flammables is what again, Mr. Clerk?
My estimation there is based purely on a comparative. Every community is different. Andover, it's charged as much as a hundred, and Amesbury charges a little, it's twenty-five.
That's my question.
Auburn, which is a, a tank center for the world, charges by the weight. And it, it's a more involved process, and the statute provides for it.
What do we do, and how much effort do we put in there?
Just do buy a certificate. We, have they go to the fire department, they come to us on the recommendation. Sometimes they have to go to council. It hasn't been very rare they gotta go to council. But typically, it's, again, about maybe fifteen, twenty minutes.
So, and but it's not just, it's not just clerk's office, but the fire department's heavily involved in this, correct?
Sometimes, not always. It depends.
They gotta keep records on this too, the fire department, underground storage tanks, right? If they leak and all that kinda stuff.
They have to be approved by the fire department and other respects under chapter one forty-eight. The, this, we're just a certifying location to make sure that they're allowed by the city council to locate it.
So you said thirty minutes? Is that what you said?
Thirty, twenty-five, ten, uh, fifteen, twenty minutes, most.
And, and, but plus the fire department too, I would think, right?
It, it depends. Sometimes, yes, sometimes, no.
Gotcha. So this is far more than what we're, I mean, the numbers there are, are twenty-five dollars, if, if it's halftime effort. And we're asking for fifty, so it's a bit more than I would expect. So if it was me, I would not increase that one. But I can't, again, make a motion.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, why wouldn't you increase it?
Uh, because we just heard from the clerk that it's about thirty minutes or so, thirty-ish, fifteen to thirty minutes.
Maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, almost.
Even more, so, and the, the average clerk, fifty dollars, so half of fifty is twenty-five, so...
Um, so, Mr. Chair, I would only disagree because looking at some of the other communities, um, Andover has it at a hundred. So, you know, Newbury Port at, at fifty, um, I think that they're, um, looking, there must be a reason why they have it so high.
And I don't know what, and I don't know what that is.
Sure.
And the clerk was trying to describe earlier that there's maybe other, every community deals with this issue differently. And so there's maybe, maybe a greater level of effort in other communities and how they deal with it.
There are, there are some communities that are holding facilities for gas and flammables.
Right, we're not doing that.
And those communities charge by the weight.
See, it's.
Yeah, that, which, which may be an explanation. Ours is just location primarily. We don't have any vast gas tank holdings.
Yeah, uh, so I'm, um, Mr. Chair, I'm fine leaving it at that, because it looks like the communities in the area have it higher than us anyways.
Okay, and what I'm willing to do, and this is why, we're gonna just go through this the way we're doing it. If I need to, I can always make these motions at the full council level. Let's do a couple more, and we're gonna call it a night, because I, I don't think.
What was the number arrived on that one?
Uh, name, same, no, no change.
No change.
No change. Correction affidavits rebirth, which is great, because I thought you were gonna be born once. So this is good. Is it rebirth?
We can make you younger.
I think it.
See, we're getting punchbanged.
Regarding, I think.
I think so too.
Yeah, okay, and I wasn't sure.
These are petitions. Sometimes, like I said, they, the, the minimum is an hour on them. Sometimes they take as long as days. Some I have.
What's the average?
Average, one to two hours.
So where are the cusp of what it should be?
I'm sorry?
We're, in my estimation, we're at the cusp of where it should be. It should be at least fifty dollars.
This is controlled by state law, is why I don't recommend increase or decrease.
Okay, then we'll move on. Uh, how about the next one? State law governs that? Okay, how about the next one? Marriage?
Same.
Uh, birth, number seventeen, birth records.
Same.
Okay. Number eighteen, birth certificates?
Business certificates?
Yeah.
These are DBAs, um...
Is that us, or is?
Uh, it, it takes probably about twenty to thirty minutes.
So again, if it's thirty minutes, that's twenty-five dollars. And you're asking for forty.
Mr. Chair, it looks like other communities for those, for the next two, um, they have it at thirty-five, forty, and thirty.
So just so we're clear on this, and we're gonna do, maybe do one more, because we're approaching ten. Uh, is, is.
Again, the process envelops other cities, departments.
Um, I'm sorry, so, uh...
And you can say the same thing, so. I would recommend, I would recommend changing it, but you're gonna, I was gonna recommend, um...
Thirty-five?
I was gonna recommend bringing it, 'cause he said, he said a half an hour of time for, I would say twenty-five.
I would also say, tell the council that it envelops other departments. The inspectional services department has to approve the location as to zoning. Other departments have to clear it, uh, as to any, uh, taxes outstanding, water bills outstanding, or citations.
How many other departments are there?
Uh, one, two, three, uh, uh, two, two, uh, three other departments.
So the bare minimum, five minutes each, we're looking at more than that. So let's just say it's probably forty-five minutes to an hour total on that.
That, that sounds more reasonable.
And now, and now, now they're talking like that, I'm, I'm asking whether or not it's enough, if it's forty enough. So I'm going, my, my spectrum has just moved to the other direction now. So I'm at least forty, and I would maybe encourage to go up, but we can leave it there to make, for simplicity purposes.
These are the mom and pop stores. I'd advise, remind the council, these are the people, sometimes they come in just to do business and to pull a certificate, 'cause their bank tells them to, in case they gotta, need to get a loan, a business loan.
Um, if it's okay with you, we're gonna get through number twenty-two, just to keep it on the business certificates, and then we're gonna stop. Number nineteen, business, so we're gonna leave it there?
Yes.
Okay, number nineteen, no change.
Same thing.
Everything's the same on that?
Yes.
Eighteen?
Eighteen, nothing changed. Leave it, nineteen, everything's the same, the clerk's telling me. All the departments are involved, same thing, right?
Right.
How about twenty?
Same.
And twenty-one, withdrawal.
Withdrawal is, uh, probably less is why, why it's twenty at this point, and we suggested thirty. The only thing I have to do is clear them with other departments. So three other departments involved, they gotta make the effort, go to the other departments. The other departments have to certify that they're not owing money before I would have them withdraw.
Mr. Chair, I, I would, uh, motion for, uh, to, to keep it at twenty, so lower it from thirty to twenty. Uh, my, my reason behind that is I'm looking at some of these other communities, and it's a lot lower than us, and the idea that someone's gonna come in to update the files, uh, we shouldn't, uh, have to charge them more.
Seconded. I don't completely buy the, the rationale, but I do buy the conclusion. So let's go with the twenty. I have no problem with that. So, uh, you're gonna second that motion? Okay, good. So what we're going to, that was, no, we got one more, I'm sorry. So on, that's number twenty-one, correct?
Yes, twenty-one.
And we're gonna move that to twenty, or keep it at twenty.
Right.
And then let's do one more. Number twenty-two, certified copy.
Ten dollars. Typically, the clerk's office traditionally is charged ten dollars for every certified copy, whether it's zoning, planning, business certificate. No change suggested.
Um, no change. Alright, so, um, why don't we do this?
We'll stop here.
We're gonna stop here at twenty-two. Stop here at twenty-two. Um, let's take a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to table this item.
Mr. Chair, before, before we get there?
At first, yes.
Um, so, I think, I know that for myself, there's only a couple of things where I differ from, um, from what the clerk is suggesting. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, what's the, the best way that we can efficiently do this the next time, um, that we take a look at this. Uh, so perhaps, um, you know, like, we, we see that the, Mr. Clerk, you see the line of questioning that the, um, our, our chair is asking. So perhaps you can add to this Excel sort of what you think the amount of time your, your department.
It's an estimate.
Yeah, just your, your estimate, yeah. So that way, um, before, even before we get, um, we come to our next meeting, we already have these numbers, and instead, what we can present, we don't have to go, you know, line by line. We can just go to the ones that, you know, after you do all your calculations and everything, you're like, you know, we, we gotta tackle thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-seven.
I mean, I have no problem going through like this.
It makes, it makes sense, so two things. It does make sense to be pre, prepared, so we're not guessing. So that, thank you for the recommendation. I, I concur. And if you wanna give that to us in advance, that's helpful. We still have to go through it anyway, so either way, it's, but that's fine, I'll.
That's not a problem.
Be fine. The only thing that I would ask is, and, and, and obviously, just a reminder in good faith, let's not go, work backwards and try to make the numbers match the level of effort so we can prove this. I really honestly, we just need the honest, the honest numbers on this, so we can make a good faith-esque decision. That's all. But if we can do that, I'm great with it. Thank you for the suggestion.
Are you welcome? Motion to table?
Motion has been made to table, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, no, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much, councils.
Thank you. So just come back to the next meeting. I'm not sure when that is yet, but you know when it is. We'll figure it out.
We'll find out at the, uh, next council meeting, I guess. Usually it's a Wednesday after, right?
Thank you for your patience. Yes, sir.
Ten days, nine days.
Is there a motion to, anything else? Am I gonna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. You would say that was you. I, I, I piled on, to be honest with you.
After you showed us that you're a little blind, you know.
What's that, my eyeballs?
Yeah, I don't trust anybody over thirty, Phil.
How we doing? Done and done. We get too tired and too punchbanged after a certain time. I don't like working after ten.
I'm falling asleep.
We get giddy, and it just, we not make good decisions.
I am like falling asleep.
Yeah.
Ten is my sleeping time.
I know. I don't know that, but I.
I'm telling you, ten, I'm falling asleep. I don't even watch no TV, nothing. Nine-thirty is the latest.
I think it's down to nine, I can't.
Oh, no. I go early.
I can't do it, I love it.
Once I, I'm out, I'm tired, I'm out. Everybody's sleeping in the house. Alright, see ya.